Franklin County Board of County Commissioners is now in session for this regular meeting Tuesday, August 1st. We have a lot to do, so we'll go ahead and get started. Before we start this morning, I will let you know, let everyone know, Commissioner Lockley is not feeling well today. That's why he's not here, but let's open our prayer in place today. Father, we thank you for this day that you've given to us. We ask that you would be with us in our discussions and deliberations today. Lord, we don't ask amiss. We ask knowing what we're looking for. Lord, we're looking to be, Lord, the mouthpiece for this, our county, our people. Father, we would make good and prudent decisions, not just on what we're looking at today, but realize that it's going to impact our tomorrow. Father, be with us in everything we say and do today. We would, Commissioner Lockley, help him to recover. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Moreau?
Yes, sir.
I know that I have at least one thing that we need to amend the agenda with before we accept it.
Okay.
I was talking to Mr. Benny Jacobs from FDOT about some problem trees that are on the state right-of-way in East Point.
Yes, sir.
That block view for traffic.
Uh-huh.
And he said that it would need direction from the board for them to be able to take those trees down. So I want to add that to the agenda for discussion today.
Okay. My recommendation to you, sir, is when Howard, your superintendent, road superintendent brings up this.
Does anybody else have anything they need to add to the agenda before we proceed?
Just something, if you're going to bring up East Point, I'm going to bring up Lanark.
Okay.
Because there's an area out there between Lanark and St. Jamesburg that has got some bad over trees there.
Turn around.
Chairman, yesterday afternoon, I received a last-minute addition to my report. It is a second invoice regarding the removal of the spoil material from the dredging that was performed around the boat blocks in East Point.
Mm-hmm.
The essential message is that they were more spoiled than was originally estimated to the removal contractor, Butler, and so he is sending a second invoice. He's requesting the board consider. I'll be reading out a very mild report at some point later today.
Okay. Nothing from you, Mr. Moreau?
No, sir.
Okay. Well, it's been several weeks since we met, so we're doing good if we've only added two or three things. So motion to approve the agenda?
Sure move. Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Hayneson, second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
All opposed? That's unanimous. Next is approval of minutes and payment of county bills?
So move.
All right. Motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
All opposed? That's unanimous. All right. Up next, we have public comments. Ms. Sharon Eaton, would you please come forward, state your name for the record? You have three minutes.
My name is Sharon Eaton. We lived here, we bought a home about 23 years ago in Lanark Village, the apartments, in unit 10-8 West Pine. Huge oak tree was there when we first bought it. There were dogs tied up to the tree, cars parked up there to the apartment. We cleaned it up. I said 484 square feet because we lived in the yard. We drove a truck for 23 years. This was our home. We rented the place, we fixed it up, we added on. We have an oak tree they've been butchering for years with the power company, beautiful live oak. We built right next to our tree. I have pictures, but I didn't have time to have them printed because I found out about this yesterday, that they were going to take this dirt road that was beside, continue it to Collins Street, which is further over, like maybe, I can't tell you how far, but if anybody knows where the old oak, I mean, old officers' club, that property sold and that dirt road there that's been closed for a long time, not used. That's what they want to open and enlarge it to 60 feet. So it'd take it all the way to my oak tree, period, and destroy the root system all the way out to the road. As I said, they've already cut the canopy across the dirt road. And they've already put signs up that say, stop sign and different things. I never was notified anything was going to happen. That may destroy the whole apartment building because that root system, that tree's got to be 100 years old or more, it's got to be all in there and into the road. And over by the old officers' club, which they bought, there's about three acres that was wetlands that runs under that road and feeds that tree all these years. So there's a lot involved. We need an arborist or somebody before they start digging and tearing up for this new people to have a bigger road. And my neighbor also has property there that they're going to have to destroy. He's here also. He wants to discuss this because he just came in. There's a fence already around our property. I put flowers out. People dug them up. But I now have it rented. They love it because it's cool, it's private. I just want to know how they can get away with this. Please stop them. Live oaks, we lost 10, what is 10 Lafayette Park one year? We don't have that many beautiful trees left. This one's been, I have pictures I took this morning. There's four trunks to this one tree that's over 20 foot going around it. And they have chopped it for years, but she comes back, she comes back, she comes back. And I just want to save it. I don't know what else I can say to you guys to, why aren't we saving our trees? That's the only one in all of, in the village. You know where it is?
That's part of the village. I mean, that is part of the village. It's not on the outskirts.
No, it's in the village.
Um, I don't know. I don't usually answer back, but she wants an answer right here. So Michael, we need to look at that and make sure that they're not going to take her tree down and all that. And if there's any county roads, and it is, one of them is a county road out there. So we need to make sure, be mindful. We can't determine what people do on their land like that, but we need to go in there and look and make sure that there's nothing that they're doing wrong.
They surveyed it and it went all the way up, that 60-foot. Now, why we need a 60-foot road there, I don't understand, but it goes all the way up to the tree. If you guys want me to, I'll show you the pictures I have. I'm sorry, I couldn't, I didn't find out about this yesterday afternoon late. I took pictures this morning, but no time to get them printed for you guys to see them. But I can show them to you on my phone if you want to see them.
Ms. Eaton, it might be that it's, the total easement is 60-foot. Usually a road width is 24, 26, no more. One thing, just listening to what you've said here this morning, I don't understand or know all the areas, so I'm not going to pretend that I do. But if Duke Energy's cut that tree or some of their contractors, then it's probably close to a power line easement.
Right, I know that part.
And we have no say-so of any of that.
I got that part. I didn't come for that one. I'm just telling you, they have butchered it for years.
Yeah.
And it survived, but this other side is not going to survive digging up the roots.
But as far as the road goes, that definitely needs to be looked at. But if it's a county road, they don't know, but our road department needs to be working on that road.
I don't understand. Collins is one road that they're going to call it Collins. I wasn't there. This gentleman, police came out and talked to him yesterday.
That's fine.
Okay.
Yeah. I was just trying to answer some of the questions.
Thank you.
We probably want to get complete to the bottom of it here this morning, but we're looking at it.
Okay, so you guys would notify me if you find out anything?
Uh-huh.
And I don't need to panic yet?
Nope.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For your time.
Ms. Debbie Jordan, she's probably online, but she does have a card filled out.
She is.
Can you hear me? I'm new at the, I'm new using the Zoom video. Can you hear me? Can you see me?
I can hear you, but I don't see you.
Okay, I'm sorry. This is my first time trying.
So good.
I wanted to be there in person, but I was concerned about COVID risk. But you can hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. I actually happen to live probably within about 50, 60 feet of where Ms. Sharon Eaton is talking about, and I can second her concerns about that road coming through and do also encourage you to look into that. I don't know all the details, but it's certainly going through and it's going to cause a lot of traffic. We already have people speeding and going right through that stop sign as it is. So yeah, please hear Sharon's concerns and help her protect that tree of hers that she values and respects so much. I'm actually here today to discuss a handful of notices of violation that was sent out by planning and zoning to at least four homeowners in Lanark Village, threatening legal action if their fences were not brought into compliance. And they were told they were at fault for not applying for a permit, even after some of these homeowners state they inquired and were told by the county there was no permit needed at the time they were erected. After a squabble between neighbors, it resulted in a begrudge party tattling on her neighbor for not complying with Lanark's antiquated and uber-restrictive regulations in what is known as the special S4 zoning district. Have you read it? While Franklin County allows eight-foot privacy fences in the majority of the county, Lanark Village, which is not a homeowners' association, is restricted to a maximum height of five feet when fences are not to be less than 50% permeable to light and air. In addition to this, there are several setbacks on our smaller-than-postage stamp lots, which make it virtually impossible for us to have privacy and for us to make use of the land that we live on. One example is that you can't block your bathroom window. Why can't someone put a shed in front of their bathroom window? It feels intrusive. A lot of neighbors are upset. And I actually am speaking on behalf of several of the neighbors who received these letters, who could not attend but have asked me to speak of, Scotty Allen, Les Vane, Wanda Sawyer, Marguerite Robertson. These are just some of the people that I know of that have gotten these letters. Then when I have asked the county about this S4 special zoning district, I really urge you guys all to look at it if you're not familiar with it. It's so restrictive and I'm told, well, it's been that way for a long time. If you look at history, there's a lot of things that have been that way for a long time, but people opened their eyes and realized it's a new day and age, and perhaps it's not that day and time today. We want it gone. We want that S4 ordinance at least revamped and let the people speak up about what they want to see today. But if there's one thing that is valuable in Lanark Village, it's our privacy and it's to secure our items out of sight of sticky fingers. We've had two, we've had two motorcycle thefts in the last two weeks. We had a car theft right down the road. We need to be able to protect our values in secured perimeter. Please, 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 I ask you, to have a hearing. Let us come and speak. Let's look at this S4 district and overhaul it and let us improve the neighborhood instead of penalizing us for it. Thank you so much for hearing me, everybody. I appreciate you.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. And the only other one I have here, Michael, it says it's about one of the things on the, on the later reports.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to bring it up then.
Yes, and we can also touch on this item a little later on that, you know, discuss. Because, you know, not to belabor the point, but this, this will affect how we deal with code enforcement.
Yes, sir.
If every time we have a code enforcement officer, which you guys said you want proactive, goes out and sees something, and then we're going to have to have a hearing in every single ordinance, every single time the code enforcement officer goes out, then we need to rethink how we're going to deal with code enforcement. That's going to be the process.
Yes, sir.
But, okay.
Up next, Ms. Michelle Maxwell, clerk of court.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Ma'am? Okay, I'm sorry. Michelle Maxwell, clerk of court. Board action is requested relative to the Value Adjustment Board, Board VAB. Two county commissioners must be appointed. A citizen member who owns homestead property within the county must be appointed. The citizen member cannot be a member or employee of any taxing authority. Board action is requested to appoint two commissioners and to appoint another nominee as the citizen member of the VAB.
Mr. Chairman, I currently sit as the chairman or chairwoman of this board. I don't mind staying a part of the board. I don't know what other commissioner might want to join in on the fun, though.
That's true. That's true. Who do we have that's, do we have anybody that's currently serving as that citizen member or we're looking for somebody to lead?
We have Donnie Gay, but he doesn't want to. He has too many obligations this year.
So don't everybody speak at once about who the other commissioner wants to be on the value adjustment.
Commissioner Amison?
We always do the one that's not here.
I wasn't ready for that. Oh, Lord.
Commissioner Amison, would you be interested in serving as the other? Because that's what they did to me. I was the newbie, so they just threw me on there and here I am, living the dream. It's really not a big, so what it basically is, is when a member of the community, they want to challenge their tax role or what they pay in their taxes from the property priser's office. And so there's a board that meets to determine that, basically, if they're complaining as valid or not, so just.
99% of the time it's solved before it has to go any further, so it's really not a huge obligation it can be, but.
Is this going to be an eight-hour absentee meeting?
No. Absences on like that.
I make a motion that we appoint Commissioner Jessica Ward and Commissioner Otis Amison.
I've only, I've been on the board since I've been elected and we've only had to meet one time. And it was a quick three-hour meeting and of course, it wasn't long at all, so it don't take much of your time.
Commissioner Amison, is that your benchmark, absentee meetings?
Y'all throw me to the wall.
That's a long meeting. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
So we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion before we vote? All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous. And as to a citizen member, do we have an idea of a name or does anybody have, anybody they've talked to that they might want to serve?
I haven't had anybody to come forward.
Can we, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Maun, I know we've got some things coming up on our agenda where we're going to be reaching out to the community to ask for representatives. Can we add this to that list or put it on the website or how does that work?
Will we have time if I run an ad, like in the next newspaper?
It'll be out next week.
Yes.
Yeah, I'll try to get it.
Is it time sensitive what you're doing? That's what we're asking.
Pretty much.
Is anybody in the room, as a citizen, want to be on the board?
How long are you talking about after you publish to make the decision or what if you don't have anybody to come in?
I wish I could tell you the 15th, but I can't promise that, not with the newspaper. No.
Put it on the website?
Yeah, I'll put it on the website.
Okay.
That can be done like this afternoon, well, tomorrow morning.
If we can put it on the website, go ahead and get it out there and see if maybe we can get something at least by the next board meeting would be a lot better.
And if you guys would ask a bit, you know, ask your constituents to see what they say.
Yeah, nobody in the room stood up, so I guess we can put it in the newspaper. Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
Ms. Maxwell, please proceed.
Okay. I'm also just pleased to announce that my office is now offering property fraud alert. It's free to the citizens of Franklin County. I encourage everyone to sign up. Property fraud is the fastest growing white collar crime in the United States, according to the FBI. I felt this was a great need for our citizens to have, so it is now in place. So it's really easy to sign up. If you will go to my website, I'm used to, I'm not used to this getting here. Go to my website at FranklinClark.com.
You need a mouse? I'm sorry.
Yeah. No, I've got it, I think. This is just covered up over here. Well, it's not moving, Michael. I'm sorry. I'm used to doing this number. I just need to scroll down. Okay.
Put two fingers.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so you would just go to my website at FranklinClark.com. And in the middle of the homepage, you can see property fraud alerts and announcements, and you can just click here and it'll take you to the website, I'm sorry, right here, propertyfraudalert.com. And it'll take you to where you need to go to sign up. You just hit continue. I just wanted you to see what it looks like. You agree to the terms. Continue, and it's simple. You just put your name and how you would like to receive your notification, either by email or by text message. You will receive notification within 48 hours of anything that's recorded in your name. So I highly encourage this. There's companies out there that charge for this service and I was able to get it for free for the citizens of Franklin County, so I encourage you to go and sign up today. If you're not able to go online, you can call 1-800-728-3858 and you can sign up over the phone or you can always call me and I can do it for you. So do that today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maxwell. Next, Mr. Howard Neighbors, roads and bridges.
Morning, Commissioners. How y'all doing?
Doing good.
We've been very hot out there, but we hanging in there with the road work, the grass cutting. I have had a couple complaints, one on South Bay Shore, which I talked to the guy and he, you know, he understood, you know, us being short of inmates and different stuff and how we make the path through the county, but we got the road cut last week, so. And also another complaint that, which I'm sure y'all aware, some of y'all aware, Tom Roberts Road, which I told you, you know, when we make our path through the county, when we get down there, we looked at the road and it's really not a safety issue, but it is a little bit of work that needs to be done to the road. Couple drainages need to be cleaned out, few bushes cut and a little bit of line rock where somebody built a driveway up and kind of filled the drainage up and there's a little line rock on, you know, the shoulder of the road, not in the middle of the road, so.
Mr. Chairman, I want to bring up, speaking of that, what you just mentioned. I did get the email about that complaint from Mr. Benny Jacobs, who is FDOT subcontractor for, with Weber now, I think. And I know, and I explained that it's not my district, so I didn't want to step on Commissioner Sanders's toes, but I just want the public to be aware that, you know, I don't mind taking care of things like that, but I don't want to, you know, impede on other commissioners. So that being said, you know, if any of y'all get any complaint from anybody in my district, as long as it's morally, ethically, legal, do it. I don't mind because we're all about trying to make Franklin County better, so I just want to put that on the record right now. But I did speak with that individual and I spoke to you about it yesterday, so I appreciate you bringing that up.
You're welcome. And we make our path through the county, which y'all aware of it, and then when we go through them and if it was a major issue, I mean, in a safety issue, we'd done took care of it, but part loading equipment up, quit doing what you're doing, which we've been cleaning up by car quest, you know, the property y'all want to clear it up. Putting cover pipes in on 67, Duval Road was loading two, one spot, we had to put a pipe in there, so we've been kind of tied up. But hopefully by the end of the week or first of next week, we'd be, you know, in that area, so.
Mr. Chairman, you didn't step on my toes, Jessica, at all. I was aware of what was going on because I've been alerted by some of the citizens down at Alligator Point. And I've been in contact with Howard and everything, but this is what people need to realize. We have a road department and our inmates are very sketchy from time to time to even have them. There's 13 guys in that road department goes out there and does the work for this whole county. So you need to understand that he has his schedule and he, just like he does his mowing, he starts on one end of the county, works his way out. And like he said, if it was an emergency, he'd been down there, but it wasn't an emergency, but he did go down there and check it out. I don't think one time, I think twice you went down there and you saw it wasn't, you know, a safety issue. So Howard's been working here long enough and I trust his judgment good enough that I know if he tells me it's not a safety hazard, it's not a safety hazard. So people need to understand that the work will be done in a fashion when we can get, when the county can get to it. And I want to tell this board too, I also told Howard, since it's 114, he'd end it. That it didn't hurt my feelings if I saw him sitting underneath the oak tree cooling it off a little bit. Because it is way, way too hot to be out there in that blazing sun. Now, I'm going to tell you something. I'm very partial to the road department, so I can't help it. They've been good to us in the county and everything. But hey, people understand sooner or later that it just takes time and your work will get done. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, one more thing too, and going back to the inmates, I've echoed many times at these meetings, I've sat right here and said, we don't need to disservice our citizens based on the inmate count. But then poses another issue that you're short staffed because, let's face it, I'm not going to go out in that beating sun and work from barely minimum wage. And, well, the person that we spoke of earlier said, I don't care if you raise my taxes to get more employees, so just be aware. And I said, you're the first person that's ever told me that, but that's good to know. Because everybody else don't want their taxes raised, but they have to understand, the people of this community have to understand that in order to get the services that they are wanting, we're going to have to make sure our county employees are paid for that service, period, flat out. I'll get real passionate, like you're passionate about the road department? I'm passionate about our county employees being taken care of, period. From the road department to everybody else.
Everybody.
So that's just, and I've talked to Aaron, we've talked about it before, about making a way to where we can get some employees so that Mr. Howard's crew's not overworked or overburdened. And it's not only him, it's Parks and Rec as well. It's everywhere. So this is, again, something we really need to look into.
Well, I'm partial, I'll county employees, but I'm just partial to the road department because I just think the work that they've done during the storms and stuff.
And we do basically all of them. We help the state out, the city out, I mean, we.
That's why we're working on trying to get y'all more money.
Yeah, and we do the whole county, not just one area, like Appalachia, Landark or Alligator Point. We do from one end of the county to the other.
And it's a 70-mile-wide county. Keep that in mind. People don't realize our county is really, really wide.
And not only that, we, a lot of people don't realize, we do sign maintenance, coves, driveways, build roads, ditches, cut roads. So, and like Commissioner Sanders said, all storms, work all the storms too, so we stay busy.
Does anyone want to help? Sabine, tell first.
Actually, I do. Those trees, this is a safety concern, but I know you took down them trees and I went and checked it out. But just down the road, and I didn't even notice it till the other day, I'm driving by there all the time. But we got a pine tree that broke off probably about 20 foot up and it's laying into that oak tree that's right there on the road. It's hard to see it, but I called it, and if that thing comes out of there, you know, I mean, hopefully nobody's riding by when it decides to fall, but.
That's right across where the old railroad track used to be, right on the east side of the road?
I want to say it's in between Big Oaks where that ditch is, back to about the curving property.
Right before you get to Dackey, right there, is that what you're talking about?
No, it's passing. I mean, I was sitting there looking at it and I was like, how did I miss that? But if you look here one day, we'll go take a look.
And if it's on the county right of way, we'll take care of it.
Oh, it is, but it just, the way it fell on the top of that oak tree, I guess it camouflaged up and I couldn't even, I mean, like I said, I've been by it 100 times.
Yeah, I hadn't seen that neither. I've seen the other ones that were cut, but, you know, I hadn't seen that one.
Actually, I think this one's probably more of a safety concern than the ones y'all took care of, but I appreciate what y'all did out there. I went and checked it out. Looks good.
You will.
Now, to the item that I added to the agenda, so I was talking with Mr. Benny Jacobs, the contractor that Commissioner Ward's already mentioned, about the trio of pine trees that's right there on the north side of 98, close to Jefferson Street, not Jefferson Street, the one over, anyway.
Franklin.
Right by the bank, yes, Franklin. He said that the only way they can approach that is for the board to make a motion and vote and ask DOT to have those removed for safety reasons, because it is hard for people to see past them. They either pull them way behind them or way in front of them, and they've leaned some after Michael, so I think it'd be better just to go in and take care of them. So that's what I wanted to bring up and discuss.
And I got one more, which I showed you when we were looking at the property we cleared, which is, that thing's going to fall eventually and.
They're supposed to be looking at that today and let us know what they can do. But the other ones are otherwise, other than the leaning a little bit, they're actually healthy trees. So that's why we take a motion and vote of the board to address.
We need to do that now?
Yes, please.
I'll make that motion.
So we have a motion to approve this letter going to Mr. Benny Jacobs or to DOT about these trees to be removed on Highway 98. Motion by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous.
I got, Mr. Chairman, I got a question pertaining to this on county right of way. We've got a lot of healthy trees that are on the county right of ways that's impeding line of sight with traffic. And I mean, it's not just in my district, it's.
It's a lot of, yes.
What, you know, since this is our time to talk, what would be the answer for that? Michael, you got any suggestions? Buster, you got any?
I will say while he's coming, you can address them, but you need to make sure that I know of, we don't have, other than Mr. Carrington, which is, does a lot for us, we don't have anything laid out telling you for sure what any easements are on any road or right of ways, how wide they are. Because they might be, even going down 98 in East Point, some areas is 60 feet, some areas are 100 feet right of way. And I mean, it's not consistent all the way through. So even if it's a county road, you still got to make sure what the right of way is for that street first, but go ahead.
Yeah, I was going to say first, we determine if it's a state project where it's, you know, 98 somewhere else, a state road, or if it's a county road. County road, if Mr., if Howard's department can't handle it, then we have to get a contractor, similar to like what we did for clearing the line of sight for the airport and then have them address that. So it would be good for everybody to maybe look at the roads, the locations, we come up with an inventory list and just knock it out with one project commissioner. That's my approach. I'm talking about Ron Project as county roads. We then inform Mr. Jacobs how to deal with the ones we have on 98. Just give him permission and they take care of it, so.
And Mr. Chairman, keep in mind if it's Duke, I know we've talked about trees and public comments, but Duke Energy also, because I had an issue with a tree, but Mr. Neighbors couldn't do anything with it because it was wrapped around a Duke power line, so that's also an issue that. So if it's not county or state, then you got to look at, is it in Duke's energies right of way or responsibility to trim or whatever.
And mine out there at Landark, where I was talking about the trees coming over the road, it's right there around Putnells, between Putnells and the Catholic Church and on down towards St. James Bay. Got trees that's hanging over, it's hanging over so far that the tractor trailers are hitting the top of the trailers with it as it goes by. So that is a little bit dangerous right there.
My biggest concern is, is whenever you come up to an intersection, you're having to get out into the road. I mean, go to Ace and drive down there and go back toward Brownsville, where I've been concerned with the speed limit. I mean, you've got to get out there in the road before you can even see a vehicle coming.
You got to ease out and ease out. Yeah, I've been.
And I'm just using that as an example, but there's other areas around the county in East Point everywhere that that's an issue. And, you know, we've been talking about speed limits. If we can't control a speed limit, passed a traffic study and all that, at least we can clear out something where somebody don't get a wreck. Because, I mean, it's inevitable, somewhere down the road that's going to happen because these trees aren't getting any smaller, as a matter of fact, but.
Yes, if it's a safety issue and it is on a county right of way, you know, we do get complaints and all, then I think it'd be left up to the board decision to, you know, whether you want them cut or not, so.
And Mr. Chairman, I'm going to go ahead and do a motion to get Billy Jacobs and them to look at the trees out there where I'm talking about. And I make that motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Ward. To also have Mr. Benny Jacobs from our FDOT contractor look at some of the overhanging trees in Landark that are becoming obstruction for vehicle traffic. Any other discussion before we vote? All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous. One of the other things we need to do, it's not now, and I just want to bring it up and get everybody prepared for the discussion. This is the way it looks when we have to wait to talk to each other in public. After we get past budget, I think we need to try to engage a contractor, whatever that looks like, to get us a, we've talked about in the past, a layout of kind of. a, um, a layout of kind of how our roads are as far as they're, uh, how deteriorated they are, which ones are the worst need and that kind of stuff. Uh, but when we do that, I also want to include in that discussion, so we've had discussions about some of the private roads. Some of these property owners have taken what the board took to heart, they have spent money on their private roads. They've spent a pretty good amount of money on their private roads to try to get them up to a standard. So I wanna at least consider looking at those as well, those that have done what the board kinda said they need to do. If it's, you know, at the same time, we have in whoever we hire, uh, as our engineer firm or whoever's looking at it, to also look at some of the roads that we know in our districts that residents have spent money on private roads to try to get them up to a standard that the county could take over. And I just wanted to mention that to everybody today, there's no action today, I just, just discussion item.
I know, I know, we, I get calls, uh, and also at the office, you know, private roads and the road is in real bad shape. Is there any way we could help them, you know? Like I say, you know, no, being, being a private road, but, but maybe we could figure out some way, do it yearly, or have they paid for the material or, or something to try to help them?
Yeah, well, what I'm specifically mentioning, and that's true, Howard, what I'm specifically mentioning though, is if there are residents that, you know, we're, especially in my district, some of the roads that I've been on and I knew how they were, not gonna go and see how they are now. They've put money in that road, you know, them together, no, nobody in the county did it. And they've had stuff done, they've widened it, they've made it better, you know, is it, I need, we need an engineering firm to determine whether it's up to a standard we can accept and kinda take it from there, is all I'm saying.
And I agree with that, Mr. Chairman, totally.
But anyway, I just brought that up as a discussion for some face in the future. Mr. Howard, thank you for everything, we really appreciate it.
Thank y'all, Commissioner, y'all stay cool.
We'll try to. Uh, Mr. Fonda Davis, is he not here today?
Yes, he is, he's on, um.
Oh, he's on Zoom.
Pop up in a second.
It's in the cloud.
Fonda?
He said we was taking too long, he checked out.
No, I, I think he's there somewhere, I don't know why he, there he goes.
Morning, Mr. Davis. He's got his volume turned off, Mike.
Turn off mute, mute, you're on mute.
Well, funny enough, muted, but I don't know why we're not hearing you. I don't know if you have a poor connection or not. Seems like your devices are muted.
Not in Franklin County.
But.
We don't have poor connections.
Really?
Yeah, we still have connections, period.
Yeah. Uh, if you want to, I'll be trying to work out Fonda's issues yet.
What is it?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Erin said she'll go ahead and do some of her Fonda related issues.
Okay.
While she's trying to work it out, let me kinda text Fonda, see what's going on there.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Chris.
Uh, I'm gonna see with item number nine on my report, which is an amended land use plan for the old FDOT building east of Carabel. That's the old Carabel Annex location in between Carabel and Island View Park and the curve. Um, Franklin County has a long-term lease agreement with the state of Florida for the old Carabel Annex location. And the county is responsible for the maintenance of this location during the duration of the lease. The county will need to either commit to repairing the pole barn structures or request permission to demolish any of the old slash unsafe storage areas. The Parks Department is in favor of asking the state for permission to demolish the unsafe pole barn storage structures and plans to purchase a metal carport to safely shelter their equipment. The attached amended land use plan also provides a timeline to the state for the replacement of the roof on the main building, which is currently out to bid and we are opening those bids today. Um, board action to approve the attached amended land use plan.
So move.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Sanders, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, uh, next item is number ten, landfill, landfill transfer station boxes. The landfill transfer station boxes have been repaired and rewelded several times already. The boxes are at the end of their useful life and are nearly unsafe for transport. The attached forty-eight thousand three hundred sixty-four dollars and fifty-six cents quote for three boxes from Marathon Equipment is based on Sourcewell contract pricing. Board action to approve the purchase of three boxes for the landfill transfer station based on Sourcewell contract pricing to be paid from the landfill tipping fee fund.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Amison, any discussion?
Yeah, I can just say, Mr. Chairman, I've seen these, these, uh, what they're talking about, and they have been welded and rewelded and rewelded. And they have dened up and I can echo that this, they definitely need to be replaced for sure.
Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous.
And next item is item number eleven. Um, and at the June sixth meeting, Mr. Davis brought this up. Um, the board approved the emergency purchase of up to one hundred thousand dollars in clay material from the landfill tipping fee fund to address the FDEP preventative measure plan to mitigate and slow leachate production from the landfill. This notice of correction action letter from FDEP is included for reference. To be able to fund this emergency procurement of the clay, the budget amendment below is needed as the transfer to fund the additional material. Increase landfill tipping fees repair and maintenance line item one hundred thousand dollars and decrease landfill tipping fees transfer to general fund one hundred thousand dollars. Board action to approve the budget amendment above to fund the emergency procurement of clay for the landfill cap.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Amison, second by Commissioner Sanders, any discussions? All in favor? All, all opposed? That's unanimous.
And that, that's it for my items relative to the landfill.
Did we get the?
Yeah, he says, he, he's on muted, I see he's looking down right now. Uh, in front of you, as, as Fonda speaks, I hopefully he got this email also, he came to Courtney this morning, someone praising.
Yes.
Your animal control department. And, um, it was at a sad time where their dog passed away and they were very, very complimentary as to your, to your, um, animal control, uh, officer responded to the situation. Mr. Davis, are we good now?
Nope.
Yeah, you're still, it says you're mute, on muted on our end, but we're still not hearing you, so, um, I don't know what it is, but we have no, um, he has no action items, Commissioner, I don't know if anything you kinda want to tell him in a one-way situation, he could use hand signals or smoke signals to communicate.
Not that bad, Michael, it could seem.
Well, you just said, it's Franklin County, so.
He can hear us at least.
Yes, he sure can.
Uh, does anyone have anything for Mr. Davis?
Just, um, Mr. Chairman, commend that, that, um, animal control officer. You know, like I said before, we do have great county staff in all departments, people just need to, to realize that, and this person did. It's so often we get complaints, but this is refreshing that there's people out there that are appreciative and are, of our county employees, so. Um, if you could, Mr. Davis, find out who that employee is and just let them know, we appreciate it, we appreciate everybody and what they do for our county, and that's through all departments.
Okay, and he did send me, uh, he sent a message. Um, he said they're having to, to find a new waste tire hauler, the one that we were using before, uh, just went out of business, um, so.
Tell us the actual company.
Yes, the company went out of business, so a new one. And to inform you that the compactor has been down for three weeks. Hopefully, um, he'll give you a call, let you know how it's looking for repairs and where he thinks he'll get it back up.
Probably ain't gonna be able to repair it, probably gonna have to buy a new one.
Yeah.
Shoveling and all that stuff, you have to tears it up pretty bad.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, we do need to talk to him to get an update on all that, if he would just call us individually, that'd probably be good.
He will, I'll have, he'll do that as soon as he, uh, we get through the meeting sometime today.
Well, Mr. Davis, sorry all the stuff didn't work out right this morning, such as technology, but thank you for everything you do and we'll talk to you again soon.
Yep.
Uh, Ms. Jennifer Daniels, emergency management.
Good morning, Commissioners, I have a couple of action items I need to take care of this morning. Uh, one, our first one is we are requesting the board's approval and signature on our EMPA Emergency Management Preparedness and Assistance Grant. It's our regular yearly grant that we get from the state for a hundred and five thousand eight hundred and six dollars.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Amison.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward, any discussion? I do have a question. Uh, Ms. Griffin, when we were looking at stuff with the budget, is this normally included in their revenues?
It is, yes, yeah, it's a recurring, uh, annual grant.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous. Uh, Ms. Jenny, before we go on to the rest of them, I do wanna ask Attorney Schuler a question. Since all of these were originally two-year contracts and they're asking for a one-year extension that's provided for in the contract, can we do them all in one motion or do they need to be separate?
I've looked at the contract, it can be one motion.
Okay.
But we, we can deal with all the contracts.
That's what we're about to do, okay.
Can, can I ask a question also before we start? Uh, yesterday afternoon, I got the very last one, I have five total debris contractors. I have two debris monitors and three debris haulers. And my last one sent me their extension too, and I did not include it in the report. Can I include it in this or do I need to wait till next board meeting and bring that last one back to you?
Well, I mean, it's, it's just an extension to our current contract, right?
Yes, sir.
And it's at the same terms as the other four we're looking at?
It's exact, everything is exactly like the others we have up here, and I have a copy of it with me also.
Yeah, I, I think that's fine with that. Just, if you would, when you do it, just go ahead and read out the names of all the companies and what we're doing and we'll, we'll probably take it in one motion.
Okay, um, requesting the board's approval and signature of a one-year extension of our disaster debris removal and disposal contracts and my disaster debris monitoring contracts for Crowder Golf, um, SDR, Ceres, DPNO, and the last one is Tetra Tech.
And they all were originally for a two-year contract that started in twenty twenty-one?
Yes, sir.
And this is the one-year extension that the contract provides for?
Yes, sir.
For all of them?
Yes, sir.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Amison, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous.
That's all I have this morning, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just one more thing, Jennifer, since he's not here, are we, are we storm ready?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Look at you, that's a fraud.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, Noah would ask every time, are we storm ready? I'm hoping we don't have a storm to look at, but I'm good with that.
I'm with you there, thank you, yeah.
Had to do it.
Thank you, Ms. Jenny, for everything. Mr. Dewitt, Polis Mosquito Control Director?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Uh, no action items, just information. Uh, you see the acres, seventy-nine thousand acres was treated, uh, adult siding. And that's a type of, on the larva side, and that's a hundred and eight acres on the larva side. Uh, see there are complaints, uh, that we receive calls from mosquitoes. And, uh, we had one email from Concern Citizen, I think some of you guys seen that. And, uh, she was concerned about the use of this, uh, adult side for mosquitoes. Concerned with it sprayed was causing major losses of wildlife and it kills the beneficial animals, you know, as well, bees, butterflies, birds, bats, etc. And, uh, concerned that the continued spraying, especially near the bays and rivers, could sustain local, uh, cause long-term effects to the health of our ecosystem and fisheries that we rely on to sustain the local environment and seafood tourism industry. I reached out to this individual, called her and just kinda educated her on the science behind the adult siding. And, uh, after I went through that with her, she seemed to be satisfied. And explained to her, we just not out there indiscriminately killing things that we target specifically with mosquitoes. Went through the droplet analysis and the, you know, what size microns those droplets are and all that, what it takes to kill a mosquito. And she seemed satisfied, so, nothing that.
Thank you, we appreciate it, Mr. Witten. I see that, uh, we did something to try to prevent any more badgers over in, on the, the area we had a, uh, sixty-seven in Carabel, correct?
Yes, the, the beavers.
The beavers, I'm sorry.
So if you found a badger, let me go. Uh, yeah, we, we've actually, uh, Rusty and the mechanic put together a, uh, we, we'd name it the Beaver Deceiver, but anyway, we, we plan on installing that, uh, tomorrow. And if, if this one seems to work okay, there's several more areas in the county we'd like to, to put, install those things. It's designed so we can put them down and if they do stop it up, keeps the debris from, from actually getting into the cover pipe. And we can remove them, dig it out, put them back, whatever we have to do, so I, I think it's gonna work okay.
Please keep us up to date if it works, cause I know on Gilbert Street in East Point, we have tremendous problems with that. It prevents everything from flowing to Indian Creek, cause it backs up right there.
There and over on Lighthouse Estate, Mr. Conrad's there, so a real major problem there. But I think, uh, Mr. Putnell, uh, Dustin with the city, last count told me he'd removed like over forty beavers from that one area in Tallahassee. That's just amazing, that many beavers in that area.
I know, it tickles me to see them, though. They'll, they'll tear them out one day and the next day you go in there, they got it back again.
So, so far the mitigation, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
So far the mitigation that we done with the, with the Tallahassee and, uh, Gray Avenue ditch, I mean, it's drained down, it's, it's, I'm pretty impressed with it. I would like to, in the future, talk with, uh, city about from the Gray Avenue towards ninety-eight, cause it just narrows up so small down there, that's bottlenecks. And that's the area we have a problem right now, but as far as the beavers on the north end, I think we've got that under control.
Like I said, that's one of the important main drains in Carabel.
It is.
So, um, my, talk to you in a minute.
Yep, right.
Okay, I was just gonna ask you, uh, Dewitt, my understanding is the new bricks that you got out for the, putting it in the water and the palms and stuff. Um, my understanding, I was talking to Warren DeGragge, and he said that what, what, the way the bricks work now, that as long as there's water there, it'll kill the mosquitoes, larvae or mosquitoes. That as soon as it dries up, it stops killing it.
Yep.
That's gonna save you a lot of money, because when we're in our dry phases, then you don't have to put all those larva sized bricks out and stuff.
That's, that's correct.
That's a good thing.
That's correct, and those, each one of those little ingots is about five dollars for each one. I mean, this went from like a dollar fifty, now we're paying five dollars. But yeah, as long as they're out of the water, they're not gonna activate, as soon as the water covered, they activate. It's pretty much saves a lot of money and time.
Yeah, yeah, going back and redoing it.
Yeah.
That's interesting, I just thought, I thought it was very interesting, though, because used to, they'd just kill out what they killed out, then it was.
It's done for.
Yeah.
And we, we have other, uh, resources that we have on hand, like for, you know, if, uh, you have another micro and everything's flooded. We have some stuff that's actually not pesticides. It's a mono-minecular film. And it's actually potable, but it actually will suffocate the larvae. And, uh, you know, so, we have this resource available if we ever need them.
Sounds good. Anything else for Mr. Polis? Sir, thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
We appreciate you guys. Uh, Mr. Eric Lovestrend?
He's on Zoom. There he is.
Good morning, Mr. Eric.
Good morning, Commissioners. I do not have any items that the board needs to take action on for the extension service today.
Okay, anyone have any questions for Mr. Eric? Mr. Eric, did you guys still do anything with four H camp this summer, how did that turn out?
We did not have any youth from the, um, one club that we have going that went four H camp this summer.
Okay.
Well, actually, we did, we did send two, two, um, youth that, um, participated in the public speaking competition. So those folks went.
Okay. Anyone else have anything for Mr. Eric? Mr. Lovestrend, thank you, we appreciate what you guys are doing.
Thank you, well, thank you.
Mr. Whitney Roundtree, uh, library director?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I have two action items for you today. Um, first is permission to close both library branches on December eleventh. This is for our annual Wilderness Coast, uh, library staff development day. It'll be held at the Wakulla Library. Linda Bruno will be presenting a workshop on servant leadership and Wild will reimburse the staff for travel.
Pleasure, the board.
So move.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sanders, any discussion? All in favor? All, all opposed? That's unanimous, please proceed.
Thank you. Um, the second item is in regards to, um, capital area community, uh, action agency. They would like to utilize the Carabel branch for their Fall Getting Ahead Workshop. Um, it's an eighteen-week program, um, and they'd like to use the library from five thirty to nine P M. Currently, our Tuesday hours are, uh, nine to six, so I'd like to temporarily change the Tuesday hours at the Carabel branch, um, to twelve to nine P M.
Okay, would that be for the eighteen weeks or what are we looking at, Ms. Whitney?
Uh, we'd either. We either do the eighteen weeks, or we probably just wait and then the first of the year, go back to our normal hours. Or if we, we may evaluate it, if we see that people like us having evening hours, we may keep it. I know the Wacola Library, they have two nights a week that they're open until eight P.M.
Mr. Chairman, I got a question.
Yes.
Whitney, I don't know if you can answer this, but the Getting Ahead Program, can you describe what that is about?
Yes. The goal of the Getting Ahead Program is to help those living in poverty or unstable situations to become economically stable.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I see Angela Webster in the back. Did you have something to say? I saw you raise your hand when I asked that question.
No, I was just like, we don't have to.
Oh, we thought you were letting us know you were here so you could answer questions. Now we're here.
All right, thanks for the clarification. So moved.
All right. Motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Amerson. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you. Just wanted to let you know, we wrapped up our summer reading program. We did our stats between the two libraries. We hosted a total of sixty-one programs this summer, and we had four-hundred-and-twenty-seven participants, and that's all I have for you today.
Oh, wow. Mr. Merone, Ms. Griffith, don't we have something on our report about the library?
Oh, we do.
Oh, yep.
Yes, USDA.
Something else on one of the reports?
USDA.
I can't remember.
Oh, I'm sorry. The purchase of the East Point.
Yes. Okay. Let's handle that one, Ms. Whitney's ear, please.
First, I got to find it. This is a rather, like, report, and I guess I didn't click the page number feature on it either, so that didn't help either. Hold on one second. Okay, the item nine, I believe, is what we're talking about?
Yes, sir.
And it's my report, in some ways, the very back of the packet that you have. Last week, was it last week or week before last, time is a little different here. Chairman Jones, Mrs. Griffith, and myself, we met with the Friends of Library representatives. The reason for the meeting, we talked about this during the budget workshop, was to discuss the possibility of transferring ownership of the East Point Library building to the county, and the county would also assume the balance of the outstanding one-hundred-and-sixty-five, five-hundred-and-thirty-dollar USDA loan on the building. Because of escalating insurance maintenance and other costs related to the building, it's become a serious financial burden on the Friends of the Library to continue ownership of the building. Is the board willing to have staff and Attorney Schuler discuss options with USDA to assume or pay off the loan balance whichever we, whichever our financial manager tells, fiscal manager tells us is the proper way to go, based on the money we have available?
Well, based on the discussion we had with the members from that board, I'm definitely in favor of it because, so the thing that they communicated to me, and I want to make sure the rest of the board is aware and the public, they, they want to be involved in doing the programs they're doing. They don't want to be involved in asking the county to double the amount that they're giving them every month because they're trying to cover insurance and they're looking at a roof that may or may not have problems and that, you know, they know the AC is on borrowed time because it's twelve years old, you know, those kind of things. So that, that was their communication to us. They, they would rather be spending their time, effort, and energy in all the different programs that are available at the, at the different libraries in the county, as opposed to being in control of the property. So I, I'm definitely in favor of it because I think that's what's their role to do.
Commissioner, the building is designed for the county's library. We should not be renting a building that we use for a county service.
Yep. But it is a pleasure of the board, sir.
I make a motion that we move forward with.
Okay. So we have a motion by Commissioner Amerson, seconded by Commissioner Sanders. We're going to move forward and look at how we can best do this switch or swap, whatever it's called, but to, to help them and to help the residents of the county and stabilize and make sure we continue to have good services that we have at the East Point Library branch.
Not even better, Commissioner, Mr. Chairman. Not even better.
Yep. Any other discussion before we vote?
Just a clarification, how much property is included with that?
It's ten, how is it, about ten acres, a little bit over ten?
I think it's maybe thirteen acres, but a lot of it's wetlands.
A lot of wetlands still, so that's.
I just wanted to make sure we let the public know.
Yes, it's thirteen acres or thereabouts, what they, what they communicated, and that, I think, over half of it's wetlands.
Yeah.
But, yeah, because Indian Creek is right there behind it.
Yeah, I'm glad, I just wanted to make sure everybody out there knew it.
Did we ever vote?
No.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? That's unanimous. All right. Any questions for Ms. Whitney? Ms. Roundtree, thank you for everything you guys are doing, we really appreciate it.
Thank you, we appreciate your support.
All right. Before we move on, let's take about a five-minute break and recharge and come back faster.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for visiting Florida's Forgotten Coast. Help us keep our beaches as beautiful as they are today for future visitors and residents.
Franklin County Board of County Commissioners now back in session. Next on our agenda is Mr. Ted Mosstaler, he's making his way. I will defer to Clark Maxwell because I think we have something that we need to possibly vote on.
Yes, I'm sorry. So Mr. Mason Bean has graciously volunteered his services for the Value Adjustment Board. So if we could go ahead and try to vote on that, that would be great.
I make a motion that we approve Mason Bean for the citizen person for the VAB Board.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Amerson. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Anybody told him it's for like five or seven years he has to serve?
Yeah, actually it has no term limit.
Oh, there we go.
All right, Mr. Ted Mosstaler, sir, it's your turn.
Good morning, Board, staff. You have my, is this thing coming on?
Yes.
You have my report for your information. There are no action items per se, but I do have a couple of things I'd like to emphasize. And that is with FDOT, with the change in personnel, and my final draft of number 23 of the security plan for the airport has been approved. So we're in good shape there for, we're in line to get our new license renewed. Coming up will be a discussion possibly on what the next step at the airport, box hangars, T-hangers, et cetera. I would like to make note that Saturday I was approached by a new pilot, another pilot, I should say, wanting a box hanger. Okay, of course, we don't have one available to rent him, so he is willing to build his own hanger on leased land from us, as we already have two tenants done doing that. So with that, and John Collins, I believe, is on video. We did have an AOE meeting on July 25th, and I will defer over to Chairman Steve for that unless you have some questions.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Mosstaler?
I do. Mr. Ted, thank you, but I got a quick question. On the security plan.
Yes, sir.
Did Centric ever give you the names of all the tenants in those T-hangers?
I have received nothing from Centric. However, they have, Andrew did go into the database, the state database, and updated it to somewhat. It needs some revisions, but it is there now.
But they still haven't coordinated with our airport manager.
No, sir.
On this stuff.
No, sir.
And how many times did you request that from Centric?
I don't know, numerous times.
I'd just like the other board members to realize, I don't know if y'all have been in contact with Mr. Mosstaler about this, but you know, whenever we ask for this stuff, Centric needs to cooperate, especially when it's a security plan that the state of Florida, you know, needs. I mean, I can shut the airport down. It could, attentively, I mean, obviously, they're gonna, I mean, the state's been more than gracious with us in the past.
Yes.
But I just wanted to let the other board members know, I don't know if you've been in contact with any of them or whatnot, but I just think that it needed to be stated publicly that we keep hitting road bumps with this right here, and there needs to be a better relationship between our FBO and our managers moving forward.
I agree with that. Anyone else have anything for Mr. Ted?
No, I appreciate you, Mr. Ted.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, Mr. Steve Kirschenbaum, Airport Advisory Board.
Steve Kirschenbaum, Chair of the Airport Operations and Economic Development Board. It's a pleasure to be here, and Jessica, Cheryl, Ricky, and Otis, I appreciate you putting your trust in me and giving me an opportunity to serve. And just to make the record clear before I kick into the project, I want to talk about is my reason for getting involved in this board is not to stand and say I'm the Chair of a Board. I had that U-Haul franchise in East Point for seven years, and I just watched young families leaving the county for jobs, seniors leaving the county for health care, and I said, something's gotta be done. And being an aviation person, I knew about the amount of money that FDOT and FAA would help us out with. My first order of agenda when we started this thing, and it was very difficult, but it's done, was to get the Centric thing done. That's all done. The second thing was to get John Collins, who's on the air right now, to come down to a meeting and get all the players in a room at the same time, the Chair of District Four, the head grant writer from FDOT, our airport engineer, our airport manager, and myself, and discuss current projects, upcoming projects, and what they could do for us. And out of that room came a feeling of this county wants progress and jobs. The FDOT head grant writer was under the impression, we just wanted to keep same old, same old going on. And there was 5 million in current projects on the table, 2.8 million in upcoming projects, and he made mention to us, and John Collins made mention to us, that there was 800,000 that wasn't really allocated this year, that it could be moved into a project to stimulate the economy and create jobs. And they were talking about a hanger project with 560 by 60 box hangars, a bunch of T-hangers, and that they could put the 800,000 into the preliminary for that. So my next board meeting, I sat down, we put that on the table, John Collins went over the current projects, the upcoming projects, and talked about the hangars. You all should have a diagram of those hangars in front of you. And I have John on the back line to kind of discuss it, but one other thing, too, I spoke to the school district, and a pet project of mine, I haven't pitched it to my board yet, is an educational facility at the site. And it would be amazing, in my old municipality, we had something where kids opted out in their junior, senior year of high school for half a day to learn to be pilots and aircraft mechanics. And that would be an amazing thing to put in one of these hangars. Steve Leonier was very receptive to sitting down and talking about it, and that's where I'd like to push this thing from the get-go. But anyhow, John's on the line to give you more of the details and show you what we're talking about. John, are you there?
Yes, yeah, I'm here, Steve, thanks a lot, appreciate it. So as Steve mentioned, we did meet on Tuesday to go over some options on hanger developments at the airport. And this is something at the airport that, you know, I know Ted Mosstaler has been trying to get moving for years, is, you know, build new hangars at the airport, because we all know that there's a waiting list for new T-hanger tenants, and hangars obviously are a source of revenue for the airport. So we want to, we want to increase revenue for the airport as much as possible. So what we did was, we looked at, there's an area kind of in between the existing T-hanger development and the, and the other hanger next to it, it's about six acres, and so we, so we looked at that and said, how could we maximize use of that space for new hanger developments? And so the exhibit that we pulled up is really what we're looking at right now. This is conceptual, nothing's been designed yet, but this is what we're looking at as, you know, certainly a good option for the airport. And so what this includes is four different T-hanger buildings, and depending on the size of the T-hangers, you could probably fit, at least probably get 24 to 32 T-hangers in those four buildings. But then also, as we're talking to the airport, you know, really over the last year, there was always a discussion about, well, do we want T-hangers, or do we want box hangars? Which, you know, T-hangers are just kind of, they're, you just fit smaller airplanes into one larger building. With a box hanger, it's more, it's a little bit larger for someone who may want to operate a business out of the hanger, or just have a little bit more room to use. And so in this exhibit here, we show, on the right-hand side, the right building, we're showing, now this layout shows six 50 by 50 box hangars, but actually, we provided a revised exhibit to the airport after our meeting on Tuesday, showing actually 60 by 60 hangars, because the idea there is that if we're marketing to businesses, 60 by 60 is really the smallest you would want to provide, because if they want shop space, you may put an office in it, storage, equipment, you're gonna need a little bit more than 50 feet square. So again, we did provide a layout showing 60 by 60 hangars on the right-hand side. So, and really, what supports this now is that already in the work program, we have $800,000 for utility improvements at the airport, which is available this year. We discussed that in detail with the airport board last Tuesday, and it was unanimous that they would rather put that money towards hanger develop, getting hanger developments started at the airport than, you know, utility improvements at the point. And we did discuss in detail, you know, what would those utility improvements look like, but again, at that point, the airport board decided that hanger development was, was the best option. So what we would do with the $800,000 that's currently available is, is go ahead and design and permit the entire build-out that you see shown on this exhibit, have it all ready to go, and then we would, we would construct as much of the utility improvements as we could with that money. So there'll be stormwater improvements, bringing utilities out to the site, constructing the taxi lanes in between the buildings to support the, you know, the buildings to be built. And then, but, you know, typically, buildings like this, you're looking at, it's about $100 a square foot to actually build a building. So with the current funding available, it does not look like we'll be able to actually construct any of these buildings yet. But what we would do is approach Triumph is our first option. We go to Triumph and see if we can compete for funding with them. We could also approach the FDOT and try to coordinate additional funding on top of our current work program to build, you know, as many of these buildings as we could. Also, this would open the door to private development at the airport, like, for example, the gentleman that Ted Mosstaler mentions, that there's other people who are interested in building their own hangars at the airport. What this would allow is the county could provide a land lease for one, two, three or so of the box hangars on the right-hand side, if someone did want to build their own hanger at the airport, you know, that's an option. So again, it's, it's been a desire for a long time for the airport to build new hangars, and this is kind of our first step towards doing that. And previously, the FDOT said they would not, they would not provide funding for hangars with the way that the Centric lease used to be set up. But now with that, with that change, the FDOT did confirm that they would support funding for hangars. So I think what Steve is going to be asking for today is approval of the board to formally change the funding from, formally change the current year $800,000 from the utility improvement project to the hanger development project. And we provided a, it's a one-page resolution that the board would need to sign, and we would send that over to the FDOT to get those funds formally switched over to this project. So I'd be happy to answer any questions from the commissioners that you might have on that.
I do have one question. Attorney Shulman, do we have a copy of this resolution he's discussing?
You may not, that's probably my fault, Commissioner, including it on the packet.
One other thing I'd like to interject is the FDOT is very overextended, and they're looking to cut back projects that aren't allocated. If we get this inked up, the money is etched in granite. If we let it sit and think about it, we could potentially lose it. And that's coming right from John.
So I'm fine with us taking action to ask them to do this today, but we can't vote and approve a resolution that we haven't seen.
Well, it's a standard resolution, Commissioner, what I would do, I would recommend that you do, is approve it contingent on attorney's review. So that if he's good with it, then you can sign it after that point. So I do agree that we want to commit this $800,000 as soon as possible.
Yes, that was my, what I'm saying or trying to figure out how we could best approach it. I'm fine with that, if the board wants to do it, that contingent on attorney's review.
John did create the resolution, so he pretty much, he handles most of our resolutions, our contracts there.
He does. All right, pleasure to the board.
I make a motion that we approve it contingent on attorney's review.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Amerson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous. Yes, yes.
John, will you email that resolution to me and to review, please?
Actually, I've been outside yours. Yeah, I do.
Tim, I do.
Yeah, that's what I say, with my air phone not uploading.
Go ahead.
I have a question for Mr. Collins. Mr. Collins, this is Commissioner Amson. My question, is FAA open any funding with these hangars? Or is this just strictly FDOT and possibly Triumph?
Unfortunately, hangars are not eligible for FAA funding. The FAA primarily funds pavement improvements and lighting improvements at airports. The only way that the FAA would ever fund a hanger is if all of your, if all of your pavement and all of your lighting is in tiptop shape, which would take some time at Apalachicola. So really, so from a funding perspective to build these hangars, FDOT would be our, probably, number one source. Triumph would be our number two source if we can, if we can show business development in the box hangars. But number three, I forgot to mention this earlier, two years ago, so in FDOT, it's not uncommon for some airports not to spend the money they've been given by the DOT. It's hard to believe, but it happens out there. And so what happens is that money goes back to the FDOT, and they have to, the FDOT has to quickly find a project to put that money. So two years ago, the FDOT called me and said, hey, we have a million dollars that we need to find a project for, but the project has to be shovel-ready. So it has to be able to be bid immediately and go into construction, because they want to spend the money quickly. And so we did identify, there was only, across all of District Three, so the entire panhandle, there was one project that was shovel-ready, it was the airport terminal that was waiting on funding. And so the airport, actually, the FDOT ended up pulling, putting 2 million, not just the initial million, but then put 2 million dollars towards that project because it was shovel-ready. So that's another goal of getting this project designed and permitted, is that we have a project that is ready to accept those extra funds that might become available by the DOT. So I just want to throw that, obviously, we can't promise that, we don't know for sure that'll happen, but this opens the door to making sure we can pull those money to Apalachicola and not, you know, not other places.
That's a good question.
Yeah.
I do have one question, and I know that we're, just so we know where we're headed to. So the potentiality we're talking of, when we actually start building these, we're looking around a million and a half to upwards of 2 million, is that what we're looking at?
I think the overall project is closer to 8 million, but the box hangars, we could get away with getting those done for 2 million, and that's the area I would go to first.
Okay, that's what I was just trying to, so we know where we're headed for, you know what I mean?
And also, I really appreciate the board's decision, and John, I appreciate you stepping into this. Our next step as a board is going to, with your blessing, is sit down with a representative from Triumph and just discuss how this could be an eligible project. And also, we're going to try to prioritize for you, John Collins, upcoming projects at the airport. And then after that, we're going to kick into marketing.
Yeah, that would be good. All I can say is, well, I'm not trying to talk bad about anybody, I've sat in a couple of those meetings with Triumph, good luck.
Oh, thank you.
Maybe it'll go well. And they have a job to do, I'm not trying to be unfair, but it can be a little, a little frustrating for a small community, because a lot of the things they're looking for and consider as part of a normal process, we're not even close to having.
Right.
So our problem is having the building blocks to get to where they want us to be.
But Mrs. Skelton called yesterday, she called twice last week, I was able to return her call, finally, we connected yesterday. They're still very interested in what they can do for us at the airport.
Good.
So to getting, so I think getting John connected with Susan would be a good thing, and she can pretty much tell him, okay, if you want the funding, here's what you need to do.
Well, Michael, also, now, the last time we met with them, it was us, the county, and representatives from both cities, both mayors.
Yes.
And they talked about, after legislative sessions over, with meeting again, so please ask Mrs. Skelton whether they want to try to arrange that meeting.
Okay.
Because they wanted to see how things worked at the legislature this year.
Yeah.
What was approved, what laws were changed, and make sure, you know what I mean, nothing was going to affect Triumph.
Yeah, see what we could do for September, because they're getting ready for their big, big meeting in August, as the notice is on my report for you guys to look at, so yes, I will.
All right, well, thank you so much. The most important thing that just came out of this meeting is, in the eyes of the FDOT, we're going to be proactive with this airport, and that's going to help us with funding. Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Chairman, while we're on airport business, you're fine, Mr. Kirschenbaum, you can go ahead and step away, but I met with FDOT, Quentin Williams, and this is my one, and I'll make it quick, because I know we got a book to get through, but that meeting was very productive. He basically told me that, to break it down so we all understand, the state of Florida outspends, all the other 49 states combined, we have, we put more money into our municipal airports than all the other ones collectively. That gives you an idea of how much money's out there with the state. And he just straight up said, you know, my job is to get you money, the only thing I need you to do is spend it. He said, the worst thing that can happen is that money come back to us.
Yep.
Because it did happen to us.
Yes.
And we have a, what do they call it, a dead year, where we get no funding because we did not spend in the past. But, but there's a lot of potential to get a lot of funding for that out there. And I do believe with Triumph, it would be, it would fall right in their wheelhouse, according to some of the conversations me and Aaron's had, with potential job growth out there. So maybe, you know, maybe finally, we can open the gates and let that water flow, so to speak. But anyway, I just wanted to tell y'all about our conversation, my conversation with Quentin Williams, was, it was a good, good learning experience as well, but.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Things I liked that I heard is working together with our school system, that's always a plus in this county. The other thing I'm concerned, Mr. Ted, you said that the FBO is not giving you the information you needed for the, for the airport security plan?
That is a problem, yes.
Well, do you need us to do something?
Well, it's done now, I hope, but it was through Sarah and Michael, mainly, talking to Andrew, Centric.
Well, that was one of the things that I want to say, is we, we had a good start to getting this airport up and running to what we've seen, the vision that we have saw for many years, is providing the jobs out there and, you know, boost up the economy for the county. But I don't want nobody taking away from you, if you got to do a report, you need numbers, they need to get them to you.
Thank you.
But, Mr. Chairman, with that, you know, I believe what Centric's concern was, was that they were giving out privileged information to their, of their clients, which doesn't make sense at all, because if they left tomorrow, those same tenants are going to stay in that hanger, they're not going to file a Centric somewhere or anything. I mean, they come here and rent those hangars, some of them are residents here, and, you know, whatnot, but they're here for Franklin County and the area, they're not here for the service of a FBO.
Yeah.
So it's kind of ridiculous, and I don't know why it was such a struggle, and still continues to be a struggle, between our airport manager, who we appointed, and a vendor, you know.
Furthermore, Mr. Chairman, it's a county-owned airport. They are leasing it from us. It's, back at the, at the end of the day, it's a county-owned airport. They, they're not, they don't have to be there, they, there's other, you know, FBOs we can get to contract with.
True.
But, yeah, I agree with Commissioner Sanders, that's unacceptable.
I might add, if I may, the reason for this is emergency contact. They were reluctant to give us a phone number, even a phone number, to call the tenant in case of a fire, or an accident, or anything that might happen to their airplane while it's on our property.
Mr. Chairman, do we need to give a timeline? I know we've already, he's already, already asked how many times, and he hasn't provided the documentation?
I'll ask.
Okay, so, no, we need to give them a time, in my opinion, can we do it on a timeline? If they don't have this information by this date, then...
Commissioner Sanders, I hear about a letter, but, no, it's a county airport, county staff is demanding the list, you give it to us, or else we have, we have an issue.
Okay.
Now, just to be clear, Mr. Chairman, now, they have updated the list, DOT, FDOT is satisfied with it, but in that list, it's still incomplete, there's still stuff missing, like contact information and whatnot. Now, FDOT let it slide, you know, I guess, is the proper terminology for it, say it like that, especially in public, but... But, but they, you know, they...
We already have the...
It's there, so we're going to...
We don't need to...
But, but it's still, you know, if down the road FDOT comes back and says, you know, this is, this list we approved is really not complete, they're not calling Centric. They're calling our airport manager. And now, he doesn't have the answers, you know, and they may not be as lenient with the timeframe down the road. And it's just ridiculous that we have a vendor, basically, that's not working with our staff. So just wanted to bring that up, and the board needs to be aware of that.
Well, we definitely need to know who's there because...
Well, Mr. Ted, the only thing I...
At the end of the day, we just need to know.
Yeah, the only thing I can say, Mr. Ted, is if you don't get what you need, you come back to us.
I will. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, Commissioner, I'm going to go...
We need to move ahead on that.
I'll go ahead and request it on behalf of staff and the airport manager and myself that we need to have it. Just go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Ted.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you. Mr. David Walker, Weems CEO.
Did you need to share the screen of the plans? Didn't you want to?
No, I'm good.
You're good?
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners David Walker, CEO, Georgie Weems Memorial Hospital, here. Just to talk to you about the building project, you know, as the community grows, so does the need for local quality healthcare here in Franklin County. And Weems have been a player in Franklin County for many, many years, you know, fought through some tough times, and the county commission has really brought us through that. In your packet, I sent you a project narrative. I want to talk, give you some history of where we were, in case people are listening, you know, about the Weems project, and then schematic designs and a conceptual cost estimates. So I want to talk to you, you know, where we've been at. You know, Weems started the, with the county commission blessing, started the building project probably twenty-ten, I believe, twenty-ten to twenty-eleven. And the idea was to build an ED, emergency department, with a diagnostic suite with ten patient rooms. And that was called a twenty-two thousand square foot renovation and addition. In twenty-sixteen, the projected estimated cost for that particular building was ten million dollars. Twenty-nineteen, the estimated cost for the total project was twenty, I mean, twelve million, between twelve and fourteen million dollars. Now, many years ago, two thousand seven, I like to call it the powerful penny. You know, the county instituted a sales tax, a penny sales tax, to pay for healthcare in Franklin County. And so it was both cities as well as with the county entering into inter-local agreements. The county also had a USDA loan in twenty-fifteen to assist with the project. We were also going through the agency of healthcare administration building construction process, stage one and two, when we stopped the project in twenty-twenty. We put up, the county as well as the county, put about one million dollars into the project from twenty-ten to probably twenty-twenty. And so we've been thinking about different ways, how can we get this building project started? Initially, I thought about maybe doing a standalone ED and from the hospital and to connect it to the existing hospital. But by doing that, then we have to start process all over again. And then how can we salvage some of the money, you know, that was already spent? So where we are now, the project still is on hold. We have about a million dollars invested into the project. The project was on its way through ACHA, Agency for Healthcare Administration, three building stages. And I think it's probably best that we stick with the existing plans that ACHA has already approved. And that existing plans would be technically the ED and the diagnostic suites. And then maybe shell the ten-patient bed unit. That's one area. The other area, just maybe do the ED and the diagnostic suites, and then look to see if you can, we can afford to do the inpatient at a later date. The reason why I'm saying this is that, you know, the ACHA, Agency for Healthcare Administration, the process, you got stage one, stage two, and stage three. Stage three is when you start building, getting your construction documents to build your project. We were already at stage two, moving into stage three there. And so the money that we've already spent it out for the building designs, for the engineering, architectural engineering, mechanical engineering plans, electrical engineering plans, we probably can still use those particular plans. Some of the things, you know, we probably have to get updated, like a financial feasibility study, architectural review study. These things we probably have to get done. And so where we headed now, I sent you over the conceptual, conceptual cost estimates here. And I had some conversations with TMH Building and Design Office, also had some conversations with original architects, just trying to get a price point, because right now we really don't really have a definite price point. But when I was in conversations with TMH, you know, they were saying that they're seeing construction maybe seven hundred dollars per square foot. You know, the architect's saying, well, we're seeing one thousand dollars per square foot. So the high end is one thousand dollars per square foot, the low end is seven hundred dollars per square foot. So if we build the existing ED with the diagnostic suite and shell the patient wing, you're looking at about a sixteen thousand five hundred and fifty square foot project at probably about ten million dollars for construction costs only. Then you add about three million dollars on that for contingencies, you know. So you're looking at about thirteen million dollars as an estimate for that on the low end. On the high end, you know, you're looking at about a sixteen thousand square foot building, pretty much. And the price for that would be about fourteen million dollars, and then you add three million dollars for contingencies. What I mean by contingencies, you know, sometimes you have soft costs, you know, you may have permits. You may have design, landscaping, things like that. And so I just, you know, talking with architects, technically, you had about three million dollars in there. Their fee would be in there as well. Now, if we do, if we eliminate the patient wing and just do the ED and the diagnostic suite only, you're looking at about, on the low end, probably about eight million dollars. And then you add three million dollars to that, probably about eleven million dollars for that. And then if you, on the high end, you're looking at about twelve million dollars, add three million dollars on that, that's like fifteen million dollars. So technically, from ACHA's point of view, the plans that they've already approved, you know, we can submit those plans and move and get the construction documents. Then, as we get ready to build, we build in phases. And if you build your ED first with a diagnostic suite, if that's what we want to do, or if you want to do the shelling, you can do that as well. This project has been going on for a long time, and we all know that. Now USDA, you know, we had a USDA loan in the beginning for ten million dollars. The payment on that loan, I think, was right around four hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars per year. The healthcare trust fund was able to make that payment for all those years, you know. So the healthcare trust fund, if we do go with USDA, the healthcare trust fund can make that monthly payment. USDA, the rates right now have just, I think it's three point six five, I believe. USDA, three point, yeah, three point six five, that's USDA rates right now. So as we look, the work with USDA, you know, they're willing to work with us as well if we want to get a loan for the project. But, you know, it's about eleven million dollars in the healthcare sales tax right now, capital outlay money. The idea may be not probably using all of that, maybe using as much as you can for USDA to fund your project. And then use that other money that is sitting there for other healthcare things as well. The idea in the county about healthcare, we all want healthcare. We all want quality healthcare. We live in this county. You know, the new building is just the first part of it. I think we need to populate healthcare throughout the county, technically. And we need to have the resources to do that. But, you know, we need to do something, you know, the county have to do something anyway, you know, about the facility part of it because the inter-local agreements are tied to that, technically. And so we, you know, we have to do something. But what is the best place for? And I think right now, you know, the best place for to try to save some of the money that we've already spent, you know, is to use the existing plans. Now, the existing plans also for that building was going to be a joint, it was going to be an adjoining on the side of the building of Weems facing Tenth Street, you know, so that was going to be the side. And so we will stay with that, technically, that same design. I think the agents for healthcare, I think they'll work with us. We go back to them and tell them that, hey, you know, we want to restart our projects. I have made some calls up there, and they understand that a lot of projects were put on hold because of COVID. And remember, twenty-twenty, COVID happened, our project was put on hold. So they understand that part. Now, there will be some new building code changes, January one, twenty-twenty-four. But if you go through the stage three process, your codes can get locked in. And technically, if those codes change in twenty-twenty-four, you won't be liable to, you know, bringing those, bringing your project up the code.
Mr. Walker, you're bringing up a good point. So have they changed from when we first did this to now, the codes?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. When I was talking to the building personnel, he didn't really mention that they really changed per se, but he did tell me that on January first, twenty-twenty-four, they will be changing. Because, you know, we started the project in twenty-twenty, and he told me that he realized that a lot of healthcare entities put projects on hold. But the pandemic is over now. And so now, you know, they may be trying to get these projects restarted.
Long as we're not moving forward with something that's kind of out of code, I'm good. I just wanted to ask why we're...
Yeah, and what we'll do also, we'll submit the plans to ACHA and say, hey, you know, I mean, we were at stage three, technically. You gave us a letter saying that, you know, your stage two documents have been received. You have these corrections need to be made. Include these in your construction documents. And I can tell them that, look, we were there. Now, would I have to start all over again? Or can you take that and look at that plan? Now, one of the things that probably was not included in the, in that twenty-twenty schematic design, I think now you got to have a secure room, you know, in the ED. So, you know, that, you know, we have to change one of those rooms for that just to meet that plan there.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I got some questions. Mr. Walker, the chairman noted about the twenty-seventeen Florida building code that's in this handout. What about the twenty-fourteen FGI guidelines for ACHA? Are those going to have to be revised as well?
Some of the, some of the plans will probably have to be revised, but that's why we'll give it to ACHA and say, you know, how much, how much of our project that you already had approved for us to move to construction documents, you know, how much, how much of this will have to be revised? And then they will let us know. Because we haven't, technically, we haven't did any research because we hadn't engaged the architects to do research for us. You know, we had some conversations with ACHA because we still want to figure out, you know, what direction the board want to go on this. Either way, you know, with the, I think we can get the existing plans that ACHA has already approved. You know, I think we can get those plans and get that process moved forward faster. But if not, then you have to start all over again, all the money that we paid out. You know, we need to try to salvage some of the money that we've already got into this particular project here.
And, Mr. Chairman, some more questions, a couple more. The, I noticed the date on this is twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty. Do we not have a revised update? I think, didn't we task you with it not long ago to get a new updated information for all this?
No, no, we did not get a new estimate. This was the document that was sent to ACHA. And so technically, you know, to revise this document, we coordinated with the architects initially. So this is the formal building document that we submitted to ACHA, you know. So we did not go and revise the whole new project because if you do that, and then you're telling them, you're ready to start trying to build.
I was sorry. I was under the impression that we discussed just doing like an ER standalone and then go to another phase. But this seems like you're incorporating everything again. I'm just confused. I'm trying to clarify.
Let me clarify also. Initially, you know, we thought about just doing an ED-only facility here. But doing that, we realized also, you know, the money that we've already put in this project, close to a million dollars, is gone. Technically, you won't be able to use that. You have to start the process all over again, you know. And you can do a standalone ED, but you have to connect it to the hospital, you know, to keep the inpatient beds alive. You know, you can do that. You just got to start all over again. You know, you've been doing this since twenty-ten, twenty-eleven.
So another question, in terms of the amount of beds, now, the ten is that, you're talking, in the presentation, ten inpatient beds. Now, are we talking ten inpatient beds and six additional ED beds? So a total of sixteen, is that...
Yes, okay, okay. What would happen with this, the standard project was a ten-bed, a six-bed ED room, and then ten-bed inpatient. That's the standard project there. But if we do this project, you know, ACHA will have to approve the whole project. But when you start building, you just build your ED and your diagnostic suite. So that's what you want to do.
Okay.
Does that answer your questions, Commissioner?
Um, it's all right.
Okay. What, if I may, Mr. Walker, so part of what I remember us discussing was, when we were talking the last couple of times, we've talked about it so many times, so pardon me if I don't understand or remember it correctly. And that's not anybody's fault. It's just the truth. The, we discussed moving forward with ED, but we also discussed you at least trying to bring back some kind of preliminary cost estimate to just doing the shell of the whole building. So we're building actually the whole building at one time, but leaving part of it just heated and cooled for future, so we could wind up being ten patient beds. It could wind up being six inpatient beds and a respiratory, you know what I mean, or whatever. So we have options going forward, knowing that, like you stated, and everybody knows, this board's been at this for more than a decade. And so my only thought is, if you do build something that's partial, you're always going to wind up with something that's partial. So that's my only thing to add to this discussion. If we do start putting shovels in the ground, I would rather build the entirety of whatever that building's going to look like, that we're not piecemeal it together, or going through the process again with ACHA and starting all over to add ten inpatient beds. So that's, you know, am I misunderstanding that?
No, no, you're not. You know, this plan, you know, with the existing plan will give you that. It's just that, you know, we won't add, you know, when we get to the, you can shell the ten-patient wing with this particular plan, but you just won't add stuff inside of it, technically, because we may not, that's not, unless, unless we get a great price on construction, then you can do that. But technically, you would just build out your ED, the diagnostic suites, and then just add the shell. And most, and most people, when they do construction also, when I was talking to a guy from ACHA, he was saying that most projects, sometimes they don't build everything and fill everything up at one time. Sometimes they just get the plans approved, and then you work on what you can, you know, bill out, technically. And the reason why I brought this plan back up because, you know, to try to move this, try to move the process further faster, the plans have already been approved, technically. But when we build, we don't have to build, I don't have to build out ten rooms, technically. I'm just building the shell, you know, for that, you know, with this particular plan here.
Mr. Walker, can you switch that to the other picture, please?
First one?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Yep, moving on down. So the portion on the north side, where it's green and then it goes to pink, that would be the ten, ten inpatient beds theoretically?
Correct, yeah, correct.
I just wanted to make sure I was looking at it right.
Yes.
It's kind of a busy schematic, isn't it?
It is. So it is.
These guys are thinking, and I'll, I could try to make it bigger if it helps. And, Mr. Walker, correct me. I'm trying to relive like what the chairman said, years and years and years of talking and doing. So I think we're trying to walk, get a balance here of trying to build a project but save money by not having to pay again for things we've already done. And I think that's where there's a lot of confusion of, okay, what are we actually doing here? So I'm thinking, what we're trying to do is build out what we already got approved from ACHA. By build out, I mean, some of it might be just a shell, empty shell, so that we don't have to go back and change plans. And, Mr. Chairman, what you're saying is, we build this part today, and then we have to go back to get approval to build another part, you know, a year from now, et cetera, et cetera. So I think that's where the confusion is. We're trying to walk that line to try and see, can we build out what we will need in the future, shell a portion of it, but only exactly on the interior, build what we need right now, which is, I believe, is the ED and some diagnostic rooms. I think that's, I think that's what I'm hearing. But, again, not to cause more confusion, but build it, the building as it would look, you know, if we had actually built the entire thing, the project as we initially wanted to do. So far...
Yeah, you're correct. You know, that's the only reason why, you know, we come back and do a double take on the project because the money that we've already spent out, you know, and, you know, electric engineer fees, they cost. You know, the mechanical engineer fees, they cost. You know, it's big money that has been into this particular project here. Now, the financial feasibility studies, you know, you have to pay that again, you know, because, you know, the financials have changed. The architectural review studies, you know, you have to pay that again. You may have to pay some permitting because that probably have been outdated. And so we're just trying to salvage some of the monies that we've already, as a county, put into this particular project, but have it built out. And so we're just trying to salvage some of the monies that we've already, as a county, put into this particular project, but have it built out. But every step of the way, at least we'll have, you know, a price for what it would cost us as we move for, of preliminary costs. We really don't have a definite cost to you to a bid.
Mr. Chairman, I got a question. Mr. Walker, with, with what you just said, do you have an idea of what it's going to cost with the permits, with the architectural fees and whatnot?
Yeah, well, that's why I just said, you know, from this sheet here, when I was saying, you know, construction only, you know, you know, we have seven hundred, seven hundred dollars per square foot for, for construction only, that's the low amount. Now, it could come in.
But I, I understand that part of it. What I'm saying is, is we've, we've got, what you said, a million already vested in the stuff. What I, what I'm getting at, just a hypothetical, if it's going to cost us, you know, go back and buy, renew these permits, uh, uh, pay again for these architectural, uh, updates and whatnot. I mean, if it's, say, pushing eight hundred grand, wouldn't it just be better to, you know, just start over? You know what I mean? I mean, uh, I'd, I'd hate to sit there and have close to two million in, in the permitting process and, and have to, you know, dole out for this whole thing if we're going to have to start basically over. I mean, I just wondered if you've got an idea of what that, what that's going to cost? Um, and do, do you understand what I'm getting at?
Okay, the, the idea, what the total cost of the project would be, or just permit?
The, the, you say we've got a million dollars already vested. What's that million dollars vested in?
Well, you have your electrical engineering fees, you have, yeah, you have.
Now, if we've got to go back and gets a portion of that renewed, which you just said we may have to do, how much is that going to cost us to get that renewed? If it's close to, you know, say what we've already got vested, wouldn't it just be wise to just, you know, lose the million we already got and start over? Or you, you, you understand what I'm getting at?
I, I, I understand what you're saying. You know, for example, you know, we have, um, civil engineer draw, the drawings for that. You know, we can use those drawings technically. You know, you have the mechanical engineering drawings.
That's, what I'm, what I'm wondering is, do, do you have an idea of what it's going to cost us to update the permit? Or the, the plans with archi, architectural engineers and all that? Have you, have you got an idea of what that's going to cost? So now, uh, you know, you can add that to the million we've already got vested, and then we're going to be at what? You know, total going into it so far?
Yeah, yeah. Well, your soft cost probably would come around, um, two million dollars. And soft costs mean your equipment, ancillary systems, site surveys, um, environmental assessment. All those things go along with the project there.
But we have, we hadn't already spent that?
No, but we spent some of that, but, you know, like the, the, the design, the landscaping design. You know, we may be able to use that because that probably hadn't really changed too much. Um, you know, your architectural, um, studies, financial sustainability studies, you know, US, if you, if you do a USDA loan, they're going to have you do that all over again. And so the architects, you know, they may charge you a full fee for that, or they may just charge you a certain amount of dollars to update that. You know, your financial feasibility studies, you, you know, that, the accounting firms, of course, they can look at our data and update that, but we don't know if they're going to charge us a full fee for that or not.
And that, that's what I'm wondering. Have you, have you checked into any of that? And the reason I say that is you come in, what was it, January, February, with the ask about piecemealing this out? And we, you know, said, yeah, go ahead and do that, so we can get an idea of what kind of numbers we're going to be looking at on actual quote. And so the, the ask you're asking now is, go back to what we, or the board, uh, approved, what, you know, seven, eight years?
One, nineteen, yeah.
Yeah, uh, you, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah.
And, and my, wait, my mind's going with it is, is, uh, if it's gonna, you know, if we're gonna have to sink a bunch of money into, uh, the, the whole building, would it be more cost effective to just eat what we've already got vested and move forward with, with just the ER by itself, like, like you asked in, when, January, February to get a quote on?
Yeah, yeah. The, the ER by itself, you know, you can do that, you know, but it's still to be connected to the hospital in a way.
Yeah, I understand.
You understand that part. It is just that, you know, we have to, you know, we have to start all over again with, with that particular price.
Well, guess what I'm saying is, is if you take the, the amount of money this is going to cost down the road, would it be more cost effective to eat the million that we've already, you know, spent on the site plan and the permit and yada, 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 to go back to what you was asking back in January? I mean, have you, have you waited out to see which one is going to be the most cost effective?
Yeah, what I was doing is trying to salvage, yeah, salvage.
Yeah, I understand that. And I commend you for it, but what I'm saying is, have we, have we really got any comparison on, uh, you know, sometimes you got to cut your losses.
Yeah. Well, well, I got, you know, I, I had the architects just do me a, a initially, you know, an ED only facility, what we were talking about earlier, you know, and, and they estimate here is twenty million dollars for that. Of course, that ED was a little bit much bigger, you know, than what we have now. Um, it's, it was eighteen thousand square foot building, you know, that we were, that we were thinking about doing in the, initially in the beginning. Um, and the, the building, the ED that we have currently existing, that we have in the plans, was like fourteen thousand square foot. Go ahead, Michael.
So, so we have plans drawn up for this?
No, 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 no. We, we don't have plans initially for the, for the standalone ED. You know, we had some conversations with architects here, you know, about, hey, during the conceptual era. Then I asked them, hey, you know, you know, what, what is the price point for that per se? You know, so they gave me like a price point, but then I asked them, can we use anything that we've already used for this? And they're like, no. I'm like, well, we don't need to think about doing that, cause I'm trying to salvage what we can use technically.
I, I got a question then. So does this, what we're looking at, represent what's been approved?
Yeah, 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 yeah. What you're looking at.
This is a newer document?
Yeah, well, this document here, we, we were talking about the ED only process.
Understand that.
Yeah, that hasn't been approved anywhere technically. It was just.
That's what I wanted to know.
Yeah, it was just an idea. And I was just asking the architects, hey, give me a figure per se, you know? And then can we use anything with that, that we've already spent on this part project with that? It was like, no, we cannot use that, so.
Right, but to, to, I think what Commissioner Amoson was asking, if I'm understanding right, and I could not be, that's fine. So we've already spent, in, in your words, a million dollars on this project, but the design that ACHA approved is not the design we're looking at?
No, no, no. The design that ACHA approved is the design that you're looking at.
They didn't have it to approve.
No, no. ACHA had all this.
That's, so, so what you're looking at is what they approved when you intended to build everything?
Everything.
I think what Commissioner, and Commissioner Amoson, correct me if I'm wrong, what you're saying, Commissioner Amoson, is, look, would it be cheaper just to get architect, start over and just build the ED right now? I think that's what he's asking, rather than building out and, and shelling half of what it is.
The problem you have with that is nobody's told us what it would be to draw that ever again.
But that's, but that's what Commissioner Amoson is asking.
Now, I'm caught up, sorry.
Can we get, can we get estimates just to build out the ED that we talked about a while back?
And that's what I was.
Versus, versus this full build out where we'll just put the ED in there, some diagnostic rooms, and then you have a building that's, that's an empty shell for years to come until you decide what to do with it. I, Commissioner Amoson, correct? Okay, that, that's what he's trying to get a comparison from. Have you done that?
Okay, no, I, I hadn't done that, but we can.
That's, Mr. Chairman, that's what I was trying to emphasize. I was confused and trying to clarify what the ask was back in January. This, the schematic that's up there right now, for one, I can't make heads or tails of any of it, to be honest. Furthermore, when was the schematic drawn? What, what year?
Okay, the schematics was drawn, um, I don't, uh, let me see the date on here, but this, this is what we submitted to ACHA. We started the project in twenty twenty, okay? So this is what, this, this is twenty twenty stuff that we stopped.
And, and again, hence why I was asking about the date of this presentation is twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. And I think that moving forward, we, with ACHA, with all these requirements, with the F, uh, FGI, which is the Critical Access people, you know, there's requirements that are, that we have to meet, guidelines we have to meet. Three years, I know is not a long time, but you said the building codes have, are going to change in twenty twenty four. What building code are we going on with this, twenty seventeen, or twenty fourteen, or?
So it looks like.
I guess my, my quest, I.
It's nineteen.
Yeah, it's nineteen, and it was based on Florida building codes, uh, twenty seventeen. That's what it looks like to me.
So have the Florida building codes changed, is my question. I guess that's what I was trying to emphasize.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, so this is basically null and void?
No, it's, it's not, it's not null and void. Technically, you know, we were, ACHA had this information. Right now, they'll get it, you know, and they would update, they would say, okay, David, you all need to update this, this, this in your, in your particular plan technically. Um, and the reason why I thought about this process before, the only reason is because we already had money in the project technically. But if the, if the county commission, you know, we talked about the standalone ED, you know, we can get architects to draw us out of a plan for that. It's going to cost money for that, no problem with that. But we can do that, and we can attach it to the front of the hospital, uh, uh, aside. What we can do, you know, we can do that. I just, I didn't engage them to do that.
Yeah, so.
I just know, Mr. Chairman, that, um, this is twenty seven, based on twenty seventeen's building codes. Um, it may not be null and void, but there's obviously going to be changes. Um, there's fire codes that have changed, there's, uh, you know, sprinkler system. Again, I, I'm not saying, I'm being nitpicky, but basically in a nutshell, these schematics, the drawing that we're seeing right now, there's going to have to be changes to it, so it's not.
It will have to be updated.
Yes.
I kind of have to agree with Commissioner Amoson. I mean, I know you're trying to save money, and that's all fine and good, but we're already twenty years into this healthcare tax, and we have nothing to show for it right now. And I know that I voted personally for that tax, and we.
I did too.
You know, we need to make sure that we serve the community with health, and we obviously know that we need healthcare in Franklin County, and we're all passionate about that, but we need to make sure that we do it the most fiscally responsible. And, um, and like I said, I know you're saving money, but I want to make sure that we're not going to have to go back to the drawing board, so to speak. And I know we technically kind of are and might have to, but I just want to make sure that when we go through this process, we might not lose money in the long run, because we didn't have updated schematics or an updated, per the, the building code and the FGI guidelines.
Yeah, yeah. ACHA will let us know what we need to update. You know, technically, the designs were already approved by ACHA. Of course, we, they have to update some of it to move the program faster further. If we start all over again, technically, you know, you're looking at another two or three years, you know, to get this started, but you can start all over again. Um, I don't have, I don't have a problem with starting all over again for that. I was just trying to preserve some of the costs, you know?
Yeah, it's, Commissioners, it's like you turn in a building plan to Steve for review, and then you pull your permit, and then it's five years later, you come back and say, okay, I want to build a house that I submitted plans to you five years ago? Steve is going to say, ah, no, let's, let's do this again. And so that's what it is. I think it's less about the schematics, it's the internals and the cost. Like you said, the, the fire sprinkler system might be a little different, you know? I don't think ADA, uh, uh, access, like width of hallways, I don't think that has changed much, but I think, I think you're going to get a hit more in the construction cost is where it's going to change after they review and update this. But Commissioners, I'll, I'll say this, and Sir, could interrupt me if I'm wrong. I think what we're here today to decide, do you want to go to a, a freestanding emergency room and connect? Well, let me stop saying freestanding. Do you want to go to ED only that's going to be connected to the hospital? Or do you want to build out the entire building and only furnish and build the ED and diagnostic on the inside? I think that's, that's where the board has to decide, to give the hospital directions as to which way to go. Now, if you want to wait and ask him to get an approximate cost to start fresh and just do an ED, I've just given the marching orders, and you can bring it back, and yeah, you could, you have a fair comparison, kind of, of which way you want to go. You might need more information before you can make that decision, Commissioners.
Well, point of clarification, so as I understand from listening, everything's been discussed today. So if we resubmit what we have, ACHA's the one that's over the building codes and everything needs to be happening. And they might tell us, you can do it, but there's these ten things that have to be changed. They're not going to, I don't think. So I'm just going to ask this question. I don't think they would say, well, since y'all submitted it, we'll go and let you build it like you did it, even though before you get it finished, the building code's going to be outdated. I don't think that's what ACHA would be doing. Now, maybe I'm, you know, being wrong, but I understand what, what you said, Mr. Roll, and what's being discussed here today. Whether we've lost money or not, that ship has already sailed. We have lost so much money in this, it is unbelievable. But we do need to get to a point where we can get past this, because I have said, and will continue to say, that a new hospital facility in Apalachicola is a good first step. It's not the end of the road. We've got a lot we need to address in healthcare. We live in a healthcare desert, and the longer we spend talking about the hospital, we're not addressing any other needs in the community to the extent they need to be addressed. Listen, I know that we're a rural community, that's what everybody lives here for and loves it for, but it doesn't help when it's an emergency and something needs to happen, and it needs to happen now, and it's your health, and it's nothing you can do anything about. So we need to get past this and get on to other things that are just as important and just as life-saving, and will address just as much need, because at the end of the day, listen, I understand going out of the county to get help for things. But if COVID taught me anything, I don't want to have to depend on some other county for my needs, if I can address them myself, so.
I'll tell you, COVID taught me a lot. I'm telling you, I like to die. But my, my idea is this, I thought we had discussion between the board back in January, if I'm not, if I'm not wrong, about looking at the possibility of doing the freestanding ER. Didn't we do that?
Yes, but I think it also included a discussion about this build out.
The shell of the building.
Yeah, shelling the building too. So I think that's where the, you, you, you know, there was multiple conversations that we didn't give a clear directive, that this is exactly how we want to go.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the, the thing about it is, is, is you're asking us to make a decision on something, we don't have.
The numbers.
Any information.
That's my point, we don't, we're looking at.
That's what I was saying. I was saying, I, I think your marching orders, if that's what you want to consider, not shelling out the building, just building the ED, I think you need to give, uh, Mr. Walker some marching orders to get you some numbers. Cause then you can't make a fair.
There's no way to compare it unless we see something. I mean, we don't, we have this, but we don't have the other.
I think we need numbers for both.
Yeah, I agree with that.
It's not going to make any decision without numbers for both. In my house, there's more money to do it, but it's not going to make any.
Yeah, but then down the road, it may save us a bunch of money. You know, and that's, that's what we got to be looking at.
I mean, you need to make an informed, educated decision as to how we're going to move on. If you don't have all the information that, you know, appropriate information, you can't. I, I agree with you a hundred percent.
Mr. Chairman, I got a question. In terms of the ACHA slash, you know, this is basically Critical Access Hospital. I mean, they're trying to get away from the Critical Access designation. Is there a requirement or a rule that's, a regulation that states that we have to build it all out at, at the same time?
No, 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 no. There, there is no rule about that. Only thing with, you.
This is trying to get consistency of look.
Right. Well, I understand not piecemealing. I agree with that.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Dealing with the Critical Access Hospital designation, um, it's a federal designation, and so the state can have their own rules, but, you know, there is no rule that we have to build everything out at one time technically. Now, to keep your designation as a Critical Access Hospital, you got to have some kind of inpatient rooms, beds. So that's why if you do the ED standalone, you connect it to the, um, hospital, that would satisfy the Critical Access Hospital designation. But if you want to build something, you're going to build the, the cafeteria at one point, and then the next time, as a hospital, you can add on, you know, the ED, you know, you don't have to build it all out. That's what I'm trying to say. And I agree with Commissioner Jones is that, you know, the hospital is just the beginning. You know, I'm all about healthcare throughout the whole county, from one end to the other. You know, I think we can, if we take care of this hospital issue thing, you know, we could begin to focus on how can we populate healthcare throughout our, throughout our county? Cause our county is a healthcare desert. And Franklin County, you know, has been truly blessed because of the power of a penny. You know, the residents and visitors, anybody that's spent anything in this county, the sales tax, not your, not the people tax dollars, you know, the sales tax, you know, are taking care of your healthcare in the county. So anytime somebody, you know, spend anything in this county, that is taking care of your healthcare. And so you can do a whole lot with this penny technically. And I just think if we can move past and get done with the hospital building issue, because there's other health things that we want to do throughout the whole county here, that we can do.
Makes sense to me.
Well, the only thing I would say is I, I'm just talking for me. Uh, I'd like to see some updated numbers on the full shell of it, and then updated numbers on a standalone, uh, emergency room.
Connected ED, yes, ma'am.
Like, like better, I mean, I'm, sorry, I'm trying to cut you off.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Mr. Walker, I, I think what, what we're trying to represent is, it's good to have an estimate, but if we're going to make a real hard decision on what kind of dollars are going to be spent and what kind of dollars are going to be committed from that tax over the long term, we do need to know for sure that we're good with this way or over that way, that it makes sense, and it's the best use of the dollar.
Okay, okay. And just to let you know, Dan, we, you know, to do that, we have to probably engage our architects again.
That's fine.
You, you know, that's fine. And they'll, they'll be willing to do it, but I think that's about to go, and then we can have two proposals. Here's your ED with diagnostic suites connected to the hospital, and then here's your, um, uh, ED diagnostic suite in the shell of the, of the building. This is your cost technically.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, if you will, I, I would rather spend a little bit of money now.
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and ensure that we're not, you know, for the public's sake, that we're not jumping into something, and then we're, we're covering a mortgage, and then having to take money out of that, uh, capital side. And then having to take money out of that, uh, capital side to help out operations like we have in the past. I mean, we're coming out of post-COVID now. Last couple of years, you, as you know, we've gotten a lot of money thrown at us for COVID, but now we're living in a more realistic time. You know, none of us have a, can read the future, but you don't know if you're going to have to come to us next year and say, hey, we need some help out of operation or capital outlay in the operation. And now here we are, and I'm just, you know, figuratively speaking, here we are carrying a mortgage and we're tapped on that side. So now we're in a financial situation bigger than what we suspected. So I'd rather spend the money now and have the numbers and know what I'm making a decision on than guessing. And that's, that's how I feel about it. And I'm wanting, you know.
That's the reason why I brought it up like I did, because that's how I feel like we need to do. We can't make no decisions going forward unless we got good numbers.
Do we need to have a motion on that or are we just direct?
Charles is going to ask, you, you, you got it? Oh, oh, you got the motion, but you do understand what, what they're asking.
Yeah, 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 technically, you know.
I could do it by motion now.
Attorney, attorney is recommending it. You do.
Yes, I think it should be by motion of both of the board with a very clear direction that is set forth by Commissioner Sanders.
Okay, I make a motion that we request the, Mr. Walker to go back and get the hard numbers for a standalone ED and also the shell built and.
Okay, when you say standalone, connect, ED connected to the hospital, that way.
And diagnostics with the ED, yeah.
We have a motion by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Amoson. Any other discussion before we vote? I will say this. Once we ever get to a building, we've still been trying to hash out with Triumph that they can't help us build the building, but they can, we can get access money there for the different equipment and machinery that needs to go in that building for, because here, and here's the thing I've been trying to stress to them. They said, well, you can use money for, in case of emergency. And I said, well, if you're not prepared today, you will be prepared tomorrow, no matter what emergency comes to you. So you know what I mean? So that's the avenue we're trying to take with that, just so everybody's aware, we're trying to have that discussion with Triumph as well.
Mr. Chairman, I was at the board at the beginning of Hurricane Michael, because I was there for a couple of weeks Hurricane Michael hit. But did this board ever receive any money from the Hurricane Michael funds that they were giving out? Did y'all receive any money?
For what? For projects or?
Yeah, for projects.
We did some. Yeah, it took forever to do, but yeah, we did.
I was just wondering, I know, I was told about Calhoun County, that's some of the money they use for the hospital that they.
Yeah, the legislature gave them some money for that, yeah.
Yeah, they did that, but they also got 20-plus million from the legislature.
I know they did. That's what, remember. But anyway.
Anyway, all right. Any other discussion before we vote on this motion?
Just, just a statement. Mr. Davis, see how quick you can get that back to us.
Okay, well, I'll work with architects as soon as I leave here. We'll.
And we're going to move on then.
Yes. All in favor or all opposed? That's unanimous.
Before you run us away, Mr. Chairman, because I know Louis isn't here today.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Could you explain to them about the new USDA for the new unit?
Yeah, okay, yeah, the USDA loan. Remember, we came, we came probably a few months ago asking that, you know, the county would approve us applying for the USDA, USDA loan. So what we did, the loan has been approved. Our match portion is $171,000. So technically, we got two new vehicles coming for $171,000. And USDA will pick up the other half of that grant opportunity for us. So that was, that was good for that. And USDA have been a very good player with us. You know, they've been working with us a whole lot on a lot of good things.
Mr. Rowan, is there anything on yours or Ms. Griffin's report that we need to address while he's here?
I don't think that would win.
Okay.
Um, I just have an informational update on the EMS station in Lanart Village. I hope to have a design proposal back for, to you all for consideration at the next county commission meeting on that.
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
All right, thank you. I appreciate it.
All right. So let's take a five-minute recess and we'll come back and do all the planning, zoning stuff before we break for lunch.
Franklin County Board of County Commissioners now back in session. We're going to pick up at our Planning, Zone and Adjustment Board Report. Ms. Courtney?
Yes.
Please proceed.
Okay. I have, I'm gonna try to get these kind of jumbled together. There's two requests for the same. We have a variance request and a critical shoreline request for 324 Patton Street. It's for, the variance is to encroach 47 feet into the 50-foot setback for vinyl seawall and riprap. And then they also need a critical shoreline for that vinyl seawall and riprap as well. The board did motion for approval. They have, I do believe they've had to get a federal permit or exemption from the state for the seawall riprap. So the critical shoreline will be continued upon state federal permits or exemption. And then the various requests was filed with the board.
And so they're going by, I'm sure they had some kind of documentation to prove the property they had?
Correct.
And allowing them to put back what's been taken over time. Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay. All right. And Attorney Schuler, is this something potential with the board text action on this variance request? Do we need to do the variance and the critical shoreline application in separate motions?
Yeah. If you see what your instructions say.
Well, there's only one variance request. I would think it would be treated different from everything else.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. The way, the way to set up you have separately on variances and then you can pull up the rest of them together is the way the board's policy seems to be.
Okay. Any questions for the board for Ms. Courtney about this potential variance request? I'm in favor of them being able to protect their property and put up a vinyl seawall. So I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Amison. Any further discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay. And so I thought, so I don't know if you want to go ahead and approve the critical shoreline application for this same.
We, all the rest of them we could potentially, I'm sorry, I'm trying to interrupt you, Ms. Courtney. All the rest of them we could potentially approve with one motion.
Okay. Can we just go through them?
Yeah, just read them so we can put on the record what we're looking at, approving possibly, or denying, and then we'll go and see what, how the board wants to do it.
Okay. All right, so I have two critical shoreline applications. One for 324 Patton Street for vinyl seawall, limestone riprap in Batville. And then I have 371 Smith Road for a single-family dock that has a four-by-398 boardwalk over wetlands, a four-by-72 dock, and six-by-26 terminus. I have a commercial site plan review for 24 Island Drive for Christopher Barnes. He is just extending his business and adding two more buildings for storage, enclosed storage facilities to expand. I also have the final plat approval for the 31 lots for Heron's Crossing in St. George Island on Leeser Lane. I also have two rezonings. One for, both are for James and Rhonda Delaney. There's two separate parcels. And they are, have five acres. And they're going from R3 Single Family Estate Residential to R3 MH, Single Family Estate Residential Mobile Homes. So the only difference between those is they're going for one that doesn't allow for mobile homes and the same one that allows for mobile homes. And the board did motion approve, to approve all of these.
Mr. Chairman, I, I'm going, I can vote on all of these. However, I am gonna have to abstain from the one that's on 24 Island Drive as I have a conflict of interest as the applicant is my first cousin.
Mr. Chairman, that's, that's correct. I saw Commissioner Ward during the break, double-checked the statute, and she does have a voting conflict according to Chapter 112. So she will have to abstain from item number 15, the commercial site plan application, 24 Island Drive, as requested by her first cousin, Christopher Barnes. So I recommend that you be to.
Vote on that one separately.
Vote on item number 15 separately.
Yes. Okay. Ms. Courtney, I do have a question on, it wasn't that one, hold on. Oh, yes, it was that one actually. So the way it's written here is an expansion of the current facilities?
Correct.
But it's not contiguous property?
No, it's across the street. The only way I said that is he's expanding his business. It's still for the property across the street. He owns both. He's just extending his business to add more storage facilities on the new property.
Okay. That was another question.
It's done for it as well.
And of, of all these items you've read, and some of them are requesting public hearings?
Correct.
Which is something we normally have always approved. Of all of these we're looking at, were any of them contentious or were the votes unanimous?
The votes were unanimous. The only ones that will be contingent would be the site, the critical shoreline applications.
All right. So other than item 15, I would entertain a motion to approve or either disapprove or table.
So move to approve.
Okay. Have a motion to approve.
Second.
By Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Amison. All of them but item number 15, which is a commercial site plan application. Any discussion before we vote? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? That's unanimous. Now let's take up number 15. What's the pleasure of the board?
Same.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Amison. Do you have questions, sir? Under discussion?
No, I was gonna make a motion, but I got beat to the front.
She beat you to it, okay. So any other discussion before we vote? All in favor? All opposed? That is unanimous, 3-0.
Judge Director, this is item that Commissioner Ward had stated, although called for the voting conflict.
Yes.
As she danced.
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Chairman, don't I have to sign a form?
Yes.
Yes, I will get.
Yeah, you have 15 days. It's only, it's only a running clock.
Do it, get it done. Department of Ethics coming on, coming on top of me.
We know it very well.
15 days go by quick if you don't pay strict attention to them.
What's the fine?
Oh, don't know, don't want to find out. Do you have a report for the board as well?
I do. I have a couple of action items that I wanted to review with you guys. The first one being, I would like board approval to reinstate term limits for the PZA board members to serve the same four-year term as their district commissioner.
Is that something we need to take in action on? So a motion to approve? Second by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion?
So, yes, if I may. So Commissioners, you know, you each appoint, appointed a member to the board that lives in your district that represents your district. And they're also, we call them alternate members or at-large?
At-large.
Well, we also have at-large members. So the at-large members will serve, basically will serve as the same, whatever district they live in, that will be their term, okay? I just kind of wanted to clarify that. But, you know, you get, Commissioner Lockley's not here. You have your five members, live in your district, represent your district, and you have your alternates. We're gonna tie those to the district that they live in, okay?
Yeah, because we discussed doing something like this anyway. And this is probably a cleaner way to do it. It goes with, I mean, anyway, it's probably a cleaner way to do it so you don't have carryover.
I think so too.
Any other discussion before we vote? All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous.
Should I mention that it says, I did put on here, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that, all PZA board members will serve at the will of the Board of County Commissioners, so.
It's, it's there. But thank you for putting that on the record.
No problem. The second one is for commercial site plan application fee. I just need board approval to acquire an application fee for a commercial site plan fee review of $250. And then board approval to charge double fee for commercial site plan projects that are started without board approval.
Okay. I have one thought on this.
Okay.
And I understand that we have to start somewhere? Since we currently don't have any kind of registration with the county for businesses, people think they've got commercial property and do what they want to. I'm not, I don't know what to do. But to me, just doubling the permit fee, that just tells somebody if they pay X amount of dollars, they can do what they want to. I don't know a better way to address it, but especially if you're, so, and I'm not saying the fee needs to be higher for the commercial site plan review. But I think we need to, we can go with this for now, but we need to be looking at what's a realistic way to kind of, because here's the issue we have. People start businesses and we don't even know they're in existence.
Correct.
Period. And that causes any number of issues because, listen, if, if anybody's gonna be doing what they should be, it should be somebody with a commercial development. You know, we're in a situation where we're very stringent on homes being built in the county. But if you're gonna run a business and open a business or build a business, go do what you want to. I mean, that's, that's the wrong message. And we've been sending that for way too long. So I'm fine with moving forward this today, but I do want us to look at something different for the penalty for not doing right.
The other thing, so this would just be for the application fee. So they will be charged double fee, so it's $500 just for going to P and D. Now they'll also be, the building official is okay with also charging them a double fee for when they pull their actual permit.
Okay.
So there'll be two, two double permit fees on them.
I'm not trying to make it untenable. But we just need people to follow the same process. So we have a consistent way to approach. You know, we're not, as Commissioners, getting calls from, oh, y'all let so-and-so do this. You know, it's just, it doesn't look good, the perception's off. And it's, it's off because we don't have a standard of practice. So hopefully this will help us address that.
Okay.
What's the pleasure of the board? We're doing two and three separate, correct?
Yes. This is just for two A and B.
Right, right.
So move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? That's unanimous. All right, item three?
Item three is for critical shoreline application fee. So it's basically the same as the commercial site plan. Those are the, these are the only two applications that go before planning zoning that don't have a fee. So this one is also going to be board approval to require application fee for critical shoreline applications of 125, and board approval to charge double fee for critical shoreline projects started without board approval. This is a fee that was brought up by the building official because there is a double fee whenever they pull their actual permit. So I just wanted to kind of do the same thing as a commercial site plan.
Okay. Pleasure to the board?
So move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Amison. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? That's unanimous.
That's all I have.
Anyone have any, any Commissioners have anything for Ms. Bankston?
I will, Mr. Chairman, but I think it's gonna fall under Mr. Merle's report, so. It's something we, we talked about in the past.
So put a sticky in there, they will come back to it, Mr. Merle. All right. So before we break for lunch, let's go ahead and do this RFQ, RFP. The first one's about the Carib, old Caribal Annex re-roof project, correct?
I don't see the price on that. How much y'all want to take that for? That's gonna be for tin roof? I don't know how square foot it is.
Okay, it's gonna be a lot, I know that. Oh, there's only one person?
Now, dune restoration is the second one.
So dune is the first, second.
Yeah, this is the first one.
They're passing up the dune restoration.
Okay, okay, do you want to do that one first?
Yeah, there's only one.
Okay, okay. The county did.
So we're doing item 20.
Okay, yep, item number 20. The Franklin County Board of County Commissioners sent out for RFQ for construction oversight services for the countywide dune restoration construction project as funded by the Restore Program. Right now, we have only one firm that responded to the solicitation. And once we open this, we will actually get a motion from the board to release it to Heather Pollan, our consultant with Langton and Associates for the Restore Program to make sure that everything was included in their packet.
Do we? Can you do just one?
Yes, you can. Yep. Yep, and the replying firm was MRD and Associates Incorporated from Destin, Florida. And we will handle releasing those.
Do we have an amount or does it matter?
That actually, it was a request for qualifications, so.
Okay. Well, I'm just going by what's on paper. Paper says amount, so.
You have to release it to be reviewed and.
Okay.
So move.
The motion sent to Langton.
Okay, so we have a motion from Commissioner Ward and a second by Commissioner Sanders to do that.
And this next project was actually the.
Hold on, any other discussion? We're moving, but we're not moving that fast. All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous. All right, go ahead, Ms. Amison.
The next project is the re-roofing of the old Caribal Annex location in between Caribal and Island View Park. And that is the leased location that is used by Parks and Recreation as their storage facility. So the first one is going to be Parker Brothers Roofing. And they are located in Tallahassee, Florida. Okay, $112,900. $112,900 with an alternate of $42,900 for shingles in lieu of the standing seam metal roof. Again, $112,900 for $42,900 for shingles in lieu of a standing seam metal roof. And let's see, bid bond was required. Let me make sure that is in here. And the bid bond is included. Again, that was Parker Brothers Roofing in Tallahassee, Florida.
So it's a, it's $113,000 for standing seam and it's only $43,000 for shingles?
Ms. Amison, let's clarify something. Ms. Amison brings up a good point. So it's $113,000 for a.
Standing seam metal.
Standing seam metal roof, but an alternate of $43,000 if it's shingles?
Correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure we're here now.
Wow.
It's a big deal.
I was thinking about roofing my house, putting some metal. Gonna hang it with some shingles or something.
My work almost 25. I'm hoping these don't come in like that. This next is from Centennial Roofing. And Centennial Roofing is located in. Panama City? Centennial Roofing, Panama City, Florida. The amount of their bid is. Okay, for a 26-gauge standing seam metal roof system, $46,000.
And that's metal?
Yes.
What's their alternate? Do they have one?
They actually did not put one on here. Yep, so 26-gauge standing seam metal roof system for $46,000. Make sure that they included their bid bond.
It'll be an interesting review, I could tell already.
And I'm wondering, Mr. Chairman, if the gauges are different.
Bid bond was included.
If they're doing.
And that was Centennial Roofing from Panama City.
So it's 26-gauge?
Yes.
Didn't it say on the first one what gauge it was? Was it different?
The bid from Parker Brothers?
Was it a different gauge?
Actually, 26-gauge is actually a more sturdy material. We would have allowed down to 22-gauge because that's actually what the Florida Building Code requires. Let's see here, on the first one, it does not specify.
Must be 40-gauge there.
I got some extra shingles.
I will say the last bid was actually more in line with what I had budgeted for the
We're talking about the building they settled there by Hendrick Park when you come out to the, or the Ball Field, didn't they?
Okay. The next bidder is BGN Contractors from Panama City, Florida. Again, BGN Contractors from Panama City, Florida.
That is metal?
That one is going to be the standing seam metal. It does not specify gauge on that. So when we release this over to Doug Schuler, the architect for the project, he actually did our design specs, he will actually, he will be evaluating these bids for us. And their bid bond was included. Okay, this next one is MKM Quality Construction of Mexico Beach. Again, MKM Quality Construction Incorporated, Mexico Beach. Let's see, she does have a cashier's check included for the bid bond. And let's see here. With the additional cost of the rotted roof areas of $7.25 per square foot. So $38,810 plus the additional cost of any rotted roof areas of $7.25 per square foot.
We'll leave that to Doug Schuler.
If the whole roof is rotted, that's gonna be a lot of money.
Okay, this.
This next one is, let's see, Lag Construction Company of Lynnhaven, Florida.
Again, Lag Construction Company, Lynnhaven, Florida. Okay. They do have their bid bond, and the amount of the bid is, let's see, $49,001. $49,001.
At least they didn't put 12 cents in there or something.
They could have put $1, nobody pleaded.
Okay. And that concludes our bid openings. If you all would, that one, I believe was, is that another one? Or is that?
No, no, no. That actually goes to Ms. Cheryl. That was.
Oh, oh, okay.
That is not part of the RFP process.
What's in that box?
Yeah. If we could just get, and, you know, actually.
A motion to release it to Doug.
Yes.
Motion to.
Forward to Doug.
Yeah. Over to the Doug Schuler.
All right. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Amison. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous. Okay. Now we're at a crossroads. Do y'all want a break for lunch? Because I think some of these items are going to have pretty good discussion.
Commissioners, I would recommend you do it because Erin and I have, I don't know about Attorney Schuler, but Erin and I have rather lengthy reports that will take some discussion.
Yes. Item Miss Erin's is over 20 items.
Yeah.
Which we've already addressed some of them, but.
And I have 25 or something like that.
If memory serves me right, the last meeting or the meeting before, we were just, you know, we were just going ahead and running through the reports.
Yeah, and we're two hours later.
About three hours later.
So do y'all want to meet back at 1:00 or 1:30? It's 12 minutes.
Well, it might be tight in Appalachia. You might want to give the extra 30 minutes if you don't mind.
I'm good with it. I wonder if y'all will do it, that's why I'm asking.
1:30 is good.
1:30. All right, we'll recess to 1:30.